Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our Thursday, July 15, 2021, City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chairs, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I ask that we all please stand. We'd like to invite Pastor Jose Sanchez, pastor of the Family Life Church, to please come and lead us on invocation. If you will, please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance after he concludes his invocation.
Pastor.
Beloved Heavenly Father, at this time we come before you, thanking you for his opportunity to invoke your name in this meeting. We ask you to bless this place, bless our mayor and his entire working. We ask that all projects and all decisions made here today be to glorify your holy name and for blessing our beautiful city. We ask everything in the name of your beloved son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sanchez. Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, under liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Sturgeon, who has a presentation to make.
If I could have Mr. Joe Etter and his wife come forward, please. That's true. Good evening. My name is Bill Sturgeon. I'm the city manager here in the city of St. Cloud, and it's my honor and privilege tonight to introduce Joe Etter, who's our deputy director of human resources and risk management. Joe was selected for 2021 the Preferred Risk Management Professional of the Year. Joe was selected from over 400 preferred members as the recipient of the Risk Management Professional of the Year award. During his tenure with the city of St. Cloud, Joe has demonstrated consistent and outstanding performance in the practice of risk management as well as service to the risk management profession. Through Joe's numerous accomplishments, which include saving the city of St. Cloud money by changing the workers' compensation insurance program, reestablished the city's safety committee, developed safety-conscious policies and procedures, aggressively pursued claims to achieve positive outcomes conducted through accident investigations to determine cause and corrective action to prevent recurrence, provided safety training to keep staff up to date on safe work methods,
Mr. Etter. At this time, we come to our citizens forum.
performed safety inspections to identify and correct unsafe behavior and conditions,
Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity
as well as continues to promote the advancement of risk management in an effort to protect personnel and property of the city of St. Cloud.
to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer
Congratulations, Joe.
prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. As you come forward, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Sure.
Christine Drake has requested to speak.
Hi, everyone. I'm back. Christine Lattis Drake, Pine Chase Estates. I've been here before with my water issues. I do want to state that we had a meeting with the city manager, Councilman Trace, Marjorie Craig, Brian Wheeler, and Cameron, and we have been trying to work diligently with everyone that just was mentioned, with trying to get a solution to, obviously, what's still going on with the water. I know mine was not freshly swabbed. This is just my water on a regular basis. So, but the reason I came up here tonight was, after we left our meeting that Thursday, I felt like we had reached a pretty productive spot. Going forward, we were going to work with you guys to use our Facebook platform to announce where the swabbing and the ice pigging and all that stuff was going to happen. And Marjorie and I since have had a long conversation, but I'm not going to lie, I felt a little bit slighted at the end of that day when I saw the city council meeting happen. And Mayor, you asked Marjorie, can you prove that there's no carcinogens in the water? And the thing is this, is that there is no proof. So to ask a question that I feel is kind of angled to get a specific answer, it's not responsible. We cannot prove whether there are or are not carcinogens in our water. And so when I know that was the question that was asked, I'm standing here today asking you and everyone up here, please provide me some documentation. We've asked time and time again, and I want documentation. If you can tell me that there are no carcinogens, then I need to know that for a fact. I would like to see that documentation. And also, the other reason I'm standing up here today is because clearly, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. This is every day at my home. I'm not the only one. This week alone, we've reached new places in the city, people messaging us left and right, telling us it's now hitting hotels that have double filtration systems. It's reaching stateside homes, Georgia, Montana, Louisiana, Ohio, places like that that are happening, you know, the state streets that it's happening on. So my question then is, going forward, we need to figure something out because clearly, it's not working. We need a Plan B, and it's a priority. It's it. I mean, we're paying for this. I can't consume that. I asked before, and nobody wanted to take me up on it. So again, I'm going to offer anybody who wants to take a drink of it, take a swig of it, it's yours. You can have it. You can take it. I brought a bottle before, actually brought two bottles before. I'll leave you one of these two as well. You're welcome to test it and take it. But we got to get to the point where we're transparent and we have something going forward. There has to be a Plan B. I'm not going to live like this any longer. So, and if we're going to ask questions, I just ask, we do it responsibly. Ask both sides of that coin. If we can't prove that there are carcinogens, but we also can't prove that there's not. So let's be fair. Let's educate the people to know that we're not sure what's in this, right? Is that fair? That's pretty fair to assess, I think. Anybody got any answer for me?
Thank you. Thank you much for sharing your concerns. We're certainly working on this matter. Marjorie, do you want to speak to this issue?
Marjorie Craig, Environment Utilities Director. We're going to continue to work on this until it's solved. I was out on the line swabbing on Sunday night, overnight, and got word for the rest of the nights that the water, that it's better, but it's, we're not saying that it's, we're not saying that it's done. We're going to continue cleaning the pipes until it's done. We'll look into the, and they've been extremely great about providing information on where they're seeing the samples or the water color, and I forward it to make sure that we follow up with those customers if we can locate them. And if not, we try to find where the location of the complaint is coming from and go to that location and flush or deal with the water issue. There is, we are finding, my field crew is saying that the main pipes were fairly clear. Again, this stuff is just sneaky, and we're working hard to get it out. We have a TV camera that's going to come video the transmission main that leads from the water plant, and that's actually something that was mentioned before. Hey, make sure that it's addressed at the source. And we're doing everything we can. We've got the ice pigging crews coming in two weeks. And everything, this is a priority. It's our priority, and we're working hard to resolve it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Trace.
Thank you. So that was the first part of it, of we're doing everything we can to get it out of the line. Second part of it is, do we have a relationship with the resin supplier that has done testing on this? And can we get that documentation? Or is there some, you know, grouping of testing that we can do on the resin itself to make sure that it is safe for consumption?
With the city manager's permission, I'd like to go ahead and follow up further with them. We have done research, quite a bit of research in the past. I think that's a great idea to see what we can get additionally and include the residents in that.
And it's not the resin that we're buying now, it's the resin that was bought two and three years ago that is in the system, right? So I don't know if the manufacturer changed or the process changed, either getting a sample from what's coming out of the lines when they're flushing some of it, or from that manufacturer if they have something at their plant.
We have samples from the water coming, the lines that we're flushing now. We have samples from the totes that were provided previously, and we have current samples. We are aware of a manufacturing difference from the original design of the plant, and we have been working to address that with the manufacturer. In the meantime, we've been rinsing it before it goes through the treatment process.
And that was something that changed a bit ago, right? The having to rinse it before it goes into the system? Okay. So if we can get whatever that testing looks like, a sample, you know, just a print out of that, or if there is any information from that manufacturer, that'd be nice.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you. So thank you for all your hard work on this. I know, I feel for the residents that keep coming with this water because I would not want this water in my house as well. I wouldn't want to drink it or bathe people in it or give it to my pets or any of that stuff. I wouldn't want to do any of that stuff. So we're 10,000% sure it's not leaving the plant anymore?
We're going to conduct some, actually, we just set up with UCF to do some additional testing to just make sure, just to double check, just to make sure that there's nothing getting out.
Yeah, because, I mean, I know we're all, we're all kind of, we don't know what to do with it. We're relying on your expertise and staff's expertise to come up with a fix for it. And then, you know, for me, I keep going, okay, they're swabbing, they're flushing, they're doing all these things, it's going to get better, but it's like not getting better. So then I just think, I mean, we need to call in the Calvary here and, I don't know, go, I mean, TWA has the same Myaks plants, but they're not having, they don't have this issue. I mean, I'm sure we've reached out to them. We have Brian Wheeler helping us. I just, it just doesn't seem like we're not getting anywhere with this. I mean, it's better, but it's still a problem. And so that's why I'm like, is it still coming out of the plant? I mean, it should be a closed system, right? Like, are we still adding? I know when all this was happening back in 2016, it should have been known from the plant operator perspective in my mind if they keep adding resin to what should be a closed system. You know, that should have been a flag to an operator person, like, where's the resin going? But I just think, I don't know what to do. Like, there's got to be some experts in this. There's got to be someone in the United States or outside the United States, somebody that could come and give us a plan here because it just, this has been going on far too long, and we're just not finalizing it.
I hear you, and I can't answer the questions from what happened before I got here, and I've been told there's nothing coming out of the plant. We're doing some additional testing, like I mentioned, with UCF to make sure that that really is the case because I want to see it. And we're, we are making progress, and it's, unfortunately, it's a marathon, and it's not a sprint. I mean, the city manager has, I mean, every day, can we do this? Can we do this? You know, can we replace the, can we, you know, replace the plant? Can we do, there are so many things that we've been looking into, but the flushing, the consistent unidirectional flushing is part of the key, getting those people hired, and the swabbing and the pigging and making sure, and now, I mean, kudos, they've helped to get us more information on where people are having the problems. We were not getting the complaints. We were not getting people telling us. So now we've got more information.
It seems, it just seems odd to me that they keep having it at their house. Like, if we're swabbing or flushing, like, why isn't it going away from their house? You know, like, something seems to be amiss with what we're trying to do here, and I don't know if we've, is it in their house? Have we tried to figure out, is it in their house? Is it in their hot water tank? Is it in something? I just, you know, it's like, why is it not going away from their house? Like, that's just, something is missing in this equation for me. Like, I would just...
So I've also discussed with the city manager, having a plumber and contracting with the plumber to just see if there's a way to flush out some of the people that continue to have these problems and whether that would be effective. And he, obviously, he's in support of that. So we're looking to do some additional, we're going to install a filter at the plant to see if it's catching anything coming out from the plant in addition to the samples. So I got to tell you, we're working on this really hard, and it's frustrating, but we're committed, and the staff's committed. I watch my staff, I just, they want this to go away, too.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that we're trying hard. I just think maybe we need to try something different. Like, this isn't, well, to me, this, you know, I just think we need to try something different. This, it should be resolving, and I don't understand why it continues to be at their house. Like, if you flush it, why doesn't it go away from their house? Like, you know?
And I respect what you're saying, and I, but I also do think that we're working smart and systematically, and I'm not sure that, from what I've been told, that wasn't always done in the past because they didn't know really where to get started. So with the systematic approach that we're using, unfortunately, it's just not, it just doesn't happen overnight, but we'll continue to bring back additional information.
So, city manager, is there something we can do, some firm we could contract with? Is there some advice we could get? I mean, I know we're trying hard, and we're trying to do everything we can, but, I mean, is there...
Mrs. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, ma'am. We'll continue to look for somebody to help us. Again, this is our second round of swabbing and ice pigging, and again, we're doing the systematic approach. We want to run the camera through the larger lines. That starts next week. We've already started swabbing. So we're going to go through that process. Again, I think what we're doing better this time is more unidirectional flushing. So you have to do all three of them. I think that's what we've decided, you have to do all three of them. I've directed her to go ahead and get a plumber onboard and meet with these people and find out what's going on in their house and see if we can figure this out. Additionally, we've done testing before with UCF. It is a product that is regulated. It has a safety data sheet, which is on their website, and again, it talks about carcinogens. It says no information available, so we will look for somebody to test for that. And we'll continue to look for somebody. Like I said, I, you know, struggle with trying to find an expert, you know, Toho's, OUC. Everybody's helped, and they keep coming up with the ideas, and we just decided a better approach is the systematic approach, like she described. But we will go look for somebody else that can help us. We've got Reese Engineering onboard.
We've got Tetra Tech.
We've met with Exum, Tetra Tech. I mean, we've got the manufacturer, you know, of the resin, the manufacturer of the plant. Again, that started back in 2017 when I became manager, having those initial meetings.
Do you ever have clean water?
Yes. Yeah. Sure. So to answer your question, unfortunately, my mother passed on January 1st of 2018. We had her funeral, and the day after her funeral, I woke up to a geyser in my front yard. It was 34 degrees outside, I believe it was, and my husband contacted the city and asked them to come out and check the pipe. And at this point in time, we had been replacing things. We had just replaced our hot water heater in 2016. We've been replacing our faucets, our valves. So we called the city, come out, they come out, they say it's literally right on the edge. Okay, no problem. So my husband says, it's ours to take care of. So he contacts a friend of ours who's a plumber, and he walks him through it, and my husband takes the pipes out, and it's corroded. I mean, like, the color of the dark wood on the bottom, it's just caked in there. And at this time, we don't know it's resin, okay? So my husband goes in and he starts to replace, you know, several of the pipes. Now, my home was built in 91. My next door neighbor's built in 2001. They're experiencing the exact same thing as me. It's not just me. My neighbor across the street was built in 1997, I think it was. Same thing, they're experiencing it. They have a double filtration system on their home. Their filtration system is sitting, shutting down. I actually brought you guys the filter. It was 14 days in. It was black, corroded. So we've changed our pipes. We've changed, I mean, I gave up here a list of fixtures I've changed out of my own pocket. I've, I mean, we've done all that. So yeah, there are days where I have clean water to some degree. The problem is, it's hard to see and really decipher until you gather into a quantitous amount, if that makes sense. And so we literally have a specific little feeder for our animals that we rinse out and we, you know, wash it out, and I put in jug water. I buy five gallon filtered water. But when we take it and we go to clean it out, it's when it's in a compact area that you're able to really see the difference. And I know my home is hit harder than some of the other homes, even in my own subdivision. My subdivision's kind of an anomaly because unlike theirs, mine has also partly septic systems. So the homes behind me all have their own septic, and I don't, I'm on the city, obviously. And so even my neighbors on the septic are experiencing it. It's even seeping into theirs, and they've told me that they've seen the brown. Now, I don't know if that's coming through the waste, you know, like the runoff, or I don't, I don't know. But, I mean, so there are days, yeah, where it's a little cleaner than others, and there are sometimes parts of the house where it's affected more than others. It seems like it's my guest bathroom that's affected more than my master suite. So it's an anomaly. I don't understand, you know? But they didn't swab my lines this week. Now, I've had my lines flushed three times in the past six weeks, and I've stood there twice and watched them flush it, and it's coming out. I mean, it's getting out. It's just, it's not getting all the way out. And they run it until Marcus and Kevin came, and then Marcus and Wesley came, or Kevin and Wesley came, and then one time, I don't know who the gentlemen were that came, but they started, and it starts off clear, and then it just comes gushing out. I mean, like the color of the dark wood, and then, like the color of the podium, and then it runs clear. So I don't know how long we have to run it to get it all out. That's why I'm asking, there's got to be a backup. There's got to be something, something different. And no, I'm not the only one, but as I've said before, there are people who don't want to come forward, and they'll message us on Save St. Cloud, and we bring it to you guys, and we've been working hard with Marjorie, trying to, you know, partner and give you guys a direction. I don't know. So...
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum?
My name is Brandy. I live in Canoe Creek Lakes. This is from today. Our neighborhood was line swabbed this past weekend, and prior to the line swabbing, Marjorie sent someone out from the city to specifically flush my personal house lines. So I know that was done, correct? Because I was having a very bad issue with it a couple of weeks ago. So this, my house was flushed the week before swabbing. This is today. Now, two days since swabbing, and my water was fine, that I could see, I wasn't looking for it because I was hoping that it was clear, but I was cleaning out my dog's water bowl this afternoon to fill it up with filtered water, and I mean, it was just blatantly obvious, there was no missing it. So I just scooped it up. But I do have clear days. Probably more than I have bad days, but when they're bad, they're really bad, and when they're clear, it smells so heavily of chlorine, you think you're in an indoor pool, and it will fill your entire house. The smell of chlorine is so strong. My fiance was out on our back porch, I had filled the bathtub up, and he came in, and he was like, why does it smell like chlorine in here? And that was just yesterday. So, I mean, that's something that is a concern, too, because, you know, she's telling us that the chlorine levels are normal, and I believe what she's saying, if it's what's on the meters that she's reading, but something's not right. It's not. And I've been dealing with this since 2016. You guys all know this. I was the first one, I believe, that I know about, that brought it to the city's attention. And I just want it fixed, and I think everybody in the city, especially, you guys are going to have a big problem because all of these people on the state streets that never experienced it before are getting real mad because, guess what? They were the ones that said, oh, I haven't, I haven't seen it, and now it's affecting them. So I've been loud, she's been loud, but you might have a lot more loud people here soon. So I hope we can figure it out. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you like to speak, sir? Please state your name and address. Could you please fill out a form, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Harold Ellens, 1841 Remembrance Avenue, St. Cloud. I've got two issues that I'd like to bring to your attention. I'm not sure that you're aware of it. In our community, we have received from the city the reclaimed water use schedule, and that makes perfect sense to me. What they've done is they've divided equally by the last digit of your address. The challenge is, in the newer part of our community, 76%, correction, in the newer part of the community, 88.5% of the homes end in either a zero or a one. So we've got two and a half hours, twice a week, to do all those homes. And if you go out and look when they're supposed to be watering, by my house, which is all the way at the opposite corner, if you will, from the source of the water, it comes out as a drizzle. So when we were having the drought a little while back, I was gone for a week, came back, my whole front yard was burned up, and there were spots on many of my, many of my neighbors. So I started investigating. So I bring that up for two reasons. One, even though this schedule makes absolute perfect sense to me, it doesn't work in our community. That's the first one. So we need to solve that, come up with another solution, more than just the two and a half hour window. The second issue is, as you put in new developments, somehow, the people who assign these numbers to the houses have to talk to the people who are going to be supporting the electricity, supporting the water, if you're going to use that as a basis for going forward. So I ask you, I caution you to do that. The second issue that I wanted to raise was electrical interruptions. Because of COVID, a lot more people working from home. Last week, for example, I worked from home last week, five times interruptions, that's once a day, knocks me off, generally right in the middle of a meeting, you know? And not, my boss doesn't really like it, but it takes me about 20 minutes to get the whole system back up and back online. I didn't, I didn't notice this happening before all the buildings started in my area. So I would ask that you look into it. In my opinion, we shouldn't be having these kinds of interruptions, power interruptions. Thank you.
Mrs. Sturgeon, I'm sure you're...
Yes, sir. We'll look into that. We'll get ahold of OUC, talk to them about the electrical interruptions, and then also I'll get Environmental Utilities Director to work with you on the reclaim issue, see what we can do to resolve that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Trace?
My question was for Marjorie on the last item. I have a question for Marjorie. On the chlorine side of things, she said after the line swabbing, it was the heavy chlorine smell. Was that because of the line swabbing process? You have to take the line out of service, flush the water through, and then you have to, do you have to overchlorinate?
That's absolutely true. Anytime you lose system pressure, or you, on purpose, we turn the pressure off. So we run the swab, it's just like a giant, you know, Q-tip swab, looking giant swab. And then on the last...
So I, I ask you, I caution you to do that. The second issue that I wanted to raise was electrical interruptions. Because of COVID, a lot more people working from home. Last week, for example, I worked from home last week. Five times interruptions, that's once a day, knocks me off. Generally, right in the middle of a meeting, you know? And not, my boss doesn't really like it. But it takes me about 20 minutes to get the, the whole system back up and back online. I didn't, I didn't notice this happening before all the buildings started in my area. So I would ask that you look into it. In my opinion, we shouldn't be having these kinds of interruptions, power interruptions. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon, I'm sure you're...
Yes, sir. We'll look into that. We'll get ahold of OUC, talk to them about the electrical interruptions. And then also, I'll get Environmental Utilities Director to work with you on the reclaim issue. See what we can do to resolve that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Trace.
My question was for Marjorie on the last item. Hi, Court. I have a question for Marjorie. On the chlorine side of things, she said after the line swabbing, it was the heavy chlorine smell. Was that because of the line swabbing process? You have to take the line out of service, flush the water through, and then you have to, do you have to overchlorinate?
That's absolutely true. Anytime you lose system pressure, or you, on purpose, we turn the pressure off. So we run the swab, it's just like a giant, you know, Q-tip swab, looking giant swab. And then on the last pass, when the, the pipe is clean, it's chlorinated. So it's a super chlorinated, actually, just like a new pipe would be. So it's, it is super chlorinated. So it's possible that we need to provide more information to the public on this fact when the swabbing is done.
Boil water notice, but then, yeah.
Right, so they're not aware.
And do we know how long? Because usually with a new pipe, it'll, it won't go into service immediately. It'll take weeks for them to finish other stuff or whatever and then come online so the chlorine have time or whatever.
Right, the decay, the chlorine decay.
It goes away. So do you know how long it'll take for that to either? It's either coming out of people's faucets or it takes that amount of time for it to get non-super chlorinated.
So when we do the swabbing and we, and we run the chlorine through, then they're on a, they're a precautionary boil water notice for 48 hours. So, and then they're advised to run their faucets and so forth and run their system to get any potential, you know, water like that out. There should be, although you're not, you know, you don't drink it, or you don't, you know, you would boil it, people will still be showering and so forth. It should, you know, I don't know exactly how long it would stay in the system, but it shouldn't be significant, but it sounds like it is more than...
So it's coming out of the line one way or the other, right? So if it's gonna be super chlorinated for, you know, six weeks, if that's how the calculation works, right?
Yeah, for the, yeah.
Usually you're having to super chlorinate that because it was a dirty pipe before, you know, the new pipe that went in, they just kinda put it, put it together, put it in. And then when they super chlorinate it, it's to kinda kill the bacteria that's in there. This was a, a pipe that you guys swabbed and then clean water from the plant kinda, kinda went into it. Can we look at that chlorine concentration or...
Yeah, we'll look at the decay.
Yeah.
So, and the residents' time of that water isn't, isn't that long. So the water flowing through the system is not in the system. I mean, it's used up pretty quickly, but I'll, I'll find out the exact number.
Yeah, because it's gonna affect the houses right next to where it gets swabbed, right? So if it came into their line during that...
It'll affect them the most.
Yeah.
So, and maybe there's a way, a technique that we can use, do something. But it is, I mean, it is in there on purpose to make sure that it does kill any bacteria that may have been introduced into the, into the pipes. And it, and if there's a pipe break, such as have been experienced by customers throughout the year, the same thing, they super chlorinate that pipe before they put it in.
Yeah.
Unless they can repair it hot.
Yeah, because the difference for me is a, a broken pipe, then you definitely have foreign material getting in there. I just didn't know if it would be different when you're doing the swabbing, you're kinda doing a clean process.
Yeah, it's pretty clean.
Yeah, so I, I didn't know if you could not super chlorinate it, but...
No, you have to.
There are certain processes you have to follow, I guess.
But I see what you're saying. You're saying that the chlorine demand would probably be way lower than having like a normal...
Yeah, pipe break or a new line.
Although a pipe break usually is pushing stuff out of it. Anyway, we'll look into that and get you an answer.
Thank you.
Don't take off.
So this is kinda new to me, the whole super chlorinated thing. I mean, after you swallow a pipe, can you super chlorinate? Can you just flush that pipe and then put it back in service?
It is flushed, so, I mean, it's super chlorinated and flushed, but...
Oh, okay. Just sounds like the concentration levels of the portally that came up.
It's just a higher concentration level.
Yeah.
And it sounds to me like we need to do, again, a better job of communicating exactly what the process is and what the customers are gonna experience.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, wait, one more.
So I, can I...
Yes.
So I am interested to know about, and I live in the grid, of course, and I was out of town the last night, or last night. But I am curious to know that people are experiencing that. But one of the reasons could be because we had shut off Water Treatment Plant Four to low pressure levels. And so that changes the hydraulics in the pipes. And so anytime you change the hydraulics in the pipes, it will, you know, change...
Stirves up the...
Yes, stirs up any particu, anything that's in the system. And so we have had a number of calls since the swabbing and we've asked them to flush their, their systems out and then to, you know, call back if they're still having the problem. So if that is the case and they're still having the problem, then we'll get to the bottom of it. And I, I can't thank, I can't thank you guys enough for communicating with me, communicating with me and letting me know of what's, what's going on out there, if customers are not letting us know directly. I really thank them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trace, for all of your help. Sir, would you like to speak to...
Hello? My name's Philip Lantry.
Your address, please.
3316 Cypress Point Circle.
Thank you.
St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. I just want to provide my perspective on the issues. I was a plumber for 18 years. And so I have a little bit of knowledge about, you know, old pipes and that sort of thing. So I've lived in St. Cloud pretty much my whole life. And I know that we used to have the system, we didn't have the treatment plants that we have now. And then the natural occurring minerals in the water, you would find those many times, but they would be bleached white because of the chlorine. Now, we've done a lot with the filtration to make it better, but in my opinion, I believe that the pipes have held on to a lot of residue because that happens over time. Plumbing pipes always build this sort of scale or like a layer on the edges of the pipes. And so, you know, although the resin was, you know, allegedly released into these pipes, I do question if ice pigging and swabbing is the best solution because essentially what you're doing is you're taking years and years of this buildup and you're now breaking it free from the pipe and you are, you know, essentially spreading it throughout the system. So you're taking all the years of this buildup of minerals and, you know, deposits that normally would stay, you know, on the edges of the pipes and now you're just sort of releasing it in there. And so that's, that's sort of my opinion on, on what's happening. I mean, I don't know, you know, all the sizes of the pipes and, you know, that sort of thing and how they're routed exactly. But, you know, I know that some of the pipes that we have are older. And then you also have the issue with, you know, every time you make a bend in the pipe with a fitting, you have very small gaps that these fittings, you know, a lot of debris and whatnot gets caught in these, in these seams and these crevices, if you will, inside the pipes. And so I think that a lot of what's happening is we're swabbing out the lines, but what we're doing is we're breaking all this stuff loose. And then now we have this loose debris that's floating around. And it's very, very difficult to ever get it out because, you know, your system, unless you can completely isolate it and, you know, completely clean that line out and separate it, it's gonna be very difficult to, to do it with that, with the methods that you're using, in my opinion. And then I have 30 seconds left. I just want to speak a little bit about the issues with the transparency and the communication. I actually received a call on Friday night that I was under a boil water notice, which I believe was false. So we haven't used our water from Friday night till now. And I still have not received a text or any information that my water is good to use. So I think communication is very important and that is probably one of the biggest areas where we can improve.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Would you like to speak again, Marjorie?
Yes. So y'all have heard me talk about the iron pipes versus the regular PVC or high-density polyethylene pipe. So what he says is true about iron pipes in particular. The PVC pipes have a much less friction. So the tendency to build up the tuberculation, which is what he's talking about, which is made up of the naturally occurring minerals that occur in water, usually calcium carbonate and iron. And the tendency to form that tuberculation or that pipe coating is, is much, is little to none. So, but in the iron pipe, that's absolutely correct. And I've worked in systems that have had a mixed pipes, just like the system. Tampa is one example. I was there for 18 years. And many of the pipes there were iron. And you don't want to, I would not advise using ice pigging to clean iron pipe in, in general. And part of it is, is not just because of, well, there's several reasons. One is that you're introducing highly, highly chilled water, but it's highly chilled because of the salt. And you don't want to introduce salt into that because it could destabilize the scale, tuberculation or scale. Scales, he also used that term, that's another term for it. But in the pipes that we're doing it in, that is, it is, it cleans the pipes. And it, and it's not, there's not the scale buildup like in the iron pipes. So, and that's probably more than you wanted to know about the inside of a pipe, but it's something that we, we're aware of and that we don't, you know? We're not using it in the iron pipes. Typically only pig an iron pipe if you're gonna line it.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the council during the citizens forum? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I wanna look back to the city manager, like, what's our plan moving forward?
Well, again, we're gonna continue with the television of the lines starting Monday. We're gonna do the swabbing, the ice pigging, the unidirectional flushing. And we'll start addressing those other areas that are starting to pop up through more unidirectional flushing. Because I said, that's when you start getting to the older pipe, that we have the debris that we don't want to stir up. So we'll have to do the unidirectional flushing. I will find out who can test the resin and also see if we can find another international expert, if we have to, that can help us come here with the system.
Stay with it till it gets done. This brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items...
May I...
Yes.
Address something on the agenda?
Yes, sir, you may.
If I could request the council to read public hearing number one, ordinance 2021-17 into the record and have it continued until August 12th, 2021.
Okay. You wanna read that into the record now?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-17 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to include Part II, City Code, Chapter 8, Animals, Article II, Definition, Article III, Division 7, REI, sorry, R-E, R-1, R-1A, R-1B, Single Family Dwelling District, Article III, Division 10, Table 3-Four, and Table 3-5, Providing for Suburbility, Conflicts, Codification, and an Effective Date.
Thank you. And your request, can this be continued?
Yes, sir, please.
Could I have a motion for continuation to the August 12th meeting?
Motion to continue, ordinance 2021-17 to the August 12th, 2021 meeting. And also, that agenda review thing wasn't at the top. That's kinda why you had to bring that up, so if we can add that to the agenda as well.
Yes, that has to be by resolution.
Yeah, we have to bring a resolution.
Which will be next meeting, the 12th.
We have a motion for Councilmember Trace. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you please call the room?
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
That brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and uncontroversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so, additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, but have the same opportunity. Mr. Sturgeon, is your lights on?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Item D, as in dog, and K.
And you said B and...
D as in dog, and K.
And K. Councilmember Matheny.
I wanna pull... I'm sorry, I got myself turned around here. S.
S.
S, as in Sam.
Thank you.
I said that, it's D as in dog.
Let's, let's go to item B?
D, sorry.
Or D, you said D, right? I'm sorry.
Can't remount notes, sorry.
I can't hear you over here. Item D.
So I thought, I thought we went through this before and we had additional contracts with Cured and Lace Pipe. Is this an additional vendor or is this changing vendors?
Could I have Mr. Craig come up and address that, please?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Department. This particular contract, we, we, Councilman Cooper and, and you also mentioned, hey, there might be some, you know, cheaper contracts out there. We did find a cheaper contract out there. This is a second contractor that we're gonna use as an interim contract before we do, we bid it out and get a select, you know, three or four contractors to line pipes.
Okay, thank you.
So it turned out that this one was cheaper and you were right.
Don't say that. My wife, yeah.
Not gonna hear that again.
And then on item K, I thought we did a space analysis for the building before, we didn't?
No, we didn't. So we did the atrium and then I requested this probably a year ago and it never got accomplished, so I'm re-bringing it, I'm bringing it back. I just need to know for the future, so we're not just keep chasing our tails.
Okay. I could've sworn we already did this, but that's fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Item number S is for Tahoea and we've approved several items for Tahoea beyond when we discussed the drainage problem that's out there between Tahoea and Kindred. I know at the time, staff had said that was in a different phase, but I'm just saying this aloud. This is the last thing I'm approving in Tahoea personally until we come to a resolution with the drainage issues out there. I know it's in a different phase than this, but we've had two or three different Tahoea items. So this is the, this is the end for me until the drainage issues are resolved.
Can I ask, what's the drainage issue?
It's being handled between city staff and county staff and I've tried to...
Obviously, I haven't heard anything about this.
Stay up. We brought, I brought it up in a meeting. I don't know if you were, maybe it was one of the meetings that you weren't, you weren't at. But basically, there's some flooding that's happening to surrounding properties.
Ooh.
And it's kinda between the Tahoea and Kindred plans. I know everybody's working on it, but at the time, we moved forward with the agenda items that we had and staff said they wouldn't approve, I believe it's in Phase Two of Tahoea, that they wouldn't approve those engineering plans. But I'm, we've had two or three different Tahoea items since then, so I'm just publicly announcing, this is the end of my approvals until there's a fix that satisfies staff for the drainage issues.
If it helps you, I'd probably be along with you on that one.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion from Councilmember Trace, the second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
That brings us to public hearings. We have already acted on item number one. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number two?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-46 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to amend Article III, Division 19, Section 3.19.5, signed regulations providing for suburbility, conflicts, codification, and an effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The purpose of this land development code amendment is to update the signed regulations, to add political and real estate signs to Section 3.19.5, exempting these signs from permitting. As you can see here, we removed the multifamily from the non-residential districts requirements and we are allowing for one political sign in both residential and non-residential districts. This amendment will allow a maximum copy area of three square feet for any residential district and 32 square feet for any non-residential district. And that allows double-sided signs. So your maximum height for residential will be four feet So your maximum height for residential will be four feet, and your non-residential, eight feet, and no illumination will be permitted. Applicants may erect their signs 30 days prior to referendum or 90 days prior to an election for a candidate. The removal of the signs will be required 30 days following the withdrawal of candidacy or if a candidate is eliminated or elected to office. If the applicant does not remove their sign, the city may remove the sign per state statutes. For real estate signs, we are allowing one sign per property for residential. If it is non-residential, it'll be based on the length of the width of the frontage, and the maximum copy area for residential will be three square feet, 32 square feet for non-residential, both allowing double-sided signs. The maximum height will be six feet for residential, eight feet for non-residential, no illumination on those either, and the removal of the signs is required seven days after the sale or lease of the property. Okay. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff and TRG have reviewed this request and recommend approval of ordinance 2021-46 on, sorry, no date there. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of ordinance 2021-46. Likewise, it is requested that this council approve ordinance number 2021-46 for this amendment to our sign regulations, and at this time, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion under our motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Come back. Can you go back to your table where you had the 300 feet? Yeah. Go forward, there you go. So I just want to ask council, kind of your opinion on this. What if we just make it one, like on non-residential, just, it's one sign? Instead of the less than 300, you know, if they have greater than 300, they can have two signs per frontage? If we just say it's one sign per property?
Wasn't this the same code as other communities out there?
We modeled after the City of Kissimmee sign code.
Okay, and they had the one for 300? Did they have, are you trying to figure out if it's going to be an issue to enforce?
I just think it would be cleaner just to say it's one per property and not get into all this. And then also, I was just thinking how people can interpret the gray space in our codes. So what if you have, you have commercial property and they have multiple tracks? And so it's like when you go on the property presentation, you click on, you know, they've got five tracks side by side by side. Do they get to do five signs? So I think.
Each parcel stands alone, yes.
So can we change the language to prevent that? Like if they're contiguous or whatever, to try to, I just, I don't know, I'm just thinking how this will be interpreted and the gray space.
Well, obviously, you can. Our typical advice with you with regard to the sign regulations, because they are a slippery slope that involves a lot of different issues, not just the number of signs, but you have constitutional issues, and you have all kinds of issues floating around, is that the best way to address them is to basically try to adopt a code that's consistent with what's been, other cities are using, so there is a level of consistency. And as it develops, if there become problems associated with it, then you can sort of look at where those problems are, where those loopholes might occur, and then you can amend your sign code at that point. I would suggest to you that the 300 linear foot issue might be something that you would get some pushback from the, basically, the residential commercial sales community, because you're talking about a sign, so if you have a property that has five or 600 foot width of frontage on the road, and it's one parcel, you'd only have one sign, that's, that's a pretty good distance to have from a marketing perspective, only to be able to have one real estate sign. So, and so I think that's part of why that's in there, and that's why that's in some of these codes. But I would suggest to you that we put, you move forward with this the way it is, and if these loopholes, as you're suggesting, develop, then we can sort of try to address to plug them in at that point.
I would say leave it the way it is. Personally, I, it matches up what Kissimmee's doing, and I understand that argument, if you've got more than 300 feet, that could open up a cage of worms.
Okay. If you guys aren't interested, I'm just, you know, just thinking of how the fights that we have.
Oh, yeah. We can always bring it back if it's abused.
Okay.
Any other discussion from council? Could I entertain a motion if there's no other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember Askew. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, could you read items three, four, and five, please?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 5.123 acres identified as OUC St. Cloud Operations and Maintenance Facility located at south and west of the intersection of US Highway 192 and Hickory Tree Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044, Florida statute. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of public institutional to approximately 24.65 acres identified as OUC St. Cloud Maintenance and Operations Facility generally located south and west of the intersection of US Highway 192 and Hickory Tree Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing and planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect separability copies on file and an effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of planning unit development compatible with a public institutional future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-11 for approximately 24.65 acres identified as OUC Maintenance and Operation Facility located south and west of the intersection of US Highway 192 and Hickory Tree Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklen again, Planning and Zoning Manager. The request before you is for annexation of approximately 5.13, 123 acres of land generally located at the southwestern intersection of US 192 and Hickory Tree Road. The subject properties have existing Osceola County land use and zoning designations of industrial, general, agricultural development and conservation, and the land use is industrial. The proposed development is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. The proposed use is a maintenance and operations facility. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic On or before February 23rd, 2021, DRC and staff reviewed this application and recommended approval of ordinance 2021-10. The Planning Commission recommendation will be available after the July 20th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, and we will bring forward to you the recommendation to the August 12th, 2021, second hearing of the City Council. The requested action is that City Council approve ordinance 2021-10 for this annexation of the OUC St. Cloud Maintenance Operations Facility. Okay. This is the concurrent comprehensive plan amendment application requesting to change their future land use on approximately 24.65 acres. The request is to change the existing county and city future land use designations to public institutional. Again, the proposed use is for a maintenance and operations facility, and the proposed use is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and will have no adverse impacts to city facilities. This map reflects the current zoning designations for the subject properties, and this map reflects the current land use designations for the subject properties. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic development. On or before February 23rd, 2021, DRC and staff recommended approval of ordinance 2021-11. The Planning Commission recommendation will be brought forward to you to the August 12th, 2021 City Council meeting, and staff is requesting that you approve ordinance number 2021-11 for the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for the OUC Maintenance and Operations Facility. And finally, this is the concurrent request for the zoning map amendment. The request is to change the existing zoning category to a planned unit development, which is compatible with the request for a public institutional land use, public institutional future land use designation. Again, here is the existing zoning map and the existing future land use map. Here we have a graphic representation of the overall layout of the facility, which includes warehouse, office, fleet, fueling, and parking uses. Here is a graphic representation provided by the applicant showing the proposed elevations of the warehouse, fleet building, entry plaza, and an aerial of the overall master plan. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic On or before June 17th, 2021, staff recommended approval of ordinance 2021-12. The Planning Commission recommendation will be brought forward to you to the August 12th, 2021 City Council meeting, and we are requesting that the City Council approve ordinance 2021-12 for the zoning map amendment for the OUC Operations Facility.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that is here to speak to this?
Good evening, Council. Sean Hendo, Hanson Walton and Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741. We're representing the applicant Orlando Utilities Commission with this project and be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to these, any of these items? If not, Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So when I had my agenda review, I asked the question, like, does OUC pay taxes? Because we're taking a lot of our land off of the tax rolls with this development, and it's the small amount of industrial and commercial that we do have, you know, so it's quite a complex that's being proposed here. So I'm just making my public comment here that I expect pretty buildings, good landscaping, you know, I expect a top-notch facility, not, you know, something that looks like a maintenance yard and, you know, made out of metal. So, but yeah, I know we partner with OUC very closely, and, you know, we're good partners in things, but I just was, like, that's a lot of property you're taking off of our tax rolls. So every time you keep in the agenda review, when it says economic development, I'm like, I'm not sure about that. But how much, how many acres is all of that property put together, do you know?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
No, that's just this application, right?
No, the rezon, I think, was for all of it.
Rezone's for all of it.
So it's 25 acres? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And it is, but the investment that they're making in the community and the high-paying jobs and the number of jobs that they'll bring, there's only three other facilities that OUC has in their entire service area. So they selected the City of St. Cloud to create their fourth facility. So you will have a lot of people employed here, you will have a lot of people spending money in the City of St. Cloud, and it will be a beautiful project. You'll be very pleased with the buildings and the landscaping there going above and beyond.
That's awesome. I've seen their facility that's in Orlando. It's not the prettiest, so I just.
Depends which one you go to. There's one that's extremely pretty.
There's one that's not real pretty, I've been to. So I just wanted to kind of say that, like, since they're taking so much property off the tax rolls, let's make sure it's a top-notch project.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Do you want zoning-type comments now? I guess, okay, because it's really the annex one first. So Ms. Matheny's comment about taking commercial off the tax rolls was kind of one of my comments too of, you know, it kind of is what it is, but on that same line, the substation right there, kind of in the primist of locations, is where the substation's going to go? Is that, was there a specific reason for that?
When they did their master planning of the site and they acquired additional property as they moved forward, that was the area where the substation was the most functional, without impacting some of the residential property that is further down Hickory Tree Road and across on the east side of Hickory Tree. So we tried to push it closer to the commercial area. It's a much larger parcel than you would normally have for a substation, so it gives us the opportunity to move it on place and then create buffers for it. So you will still have transmission lines with tall poles leaving it.
Yeah.
But you will, we'll be able to buffer it as we develop it. And as we continue to evolve this project, because it's also a joint City of St. Cloud project, as we continue to evolve it, if it makes more sense to recapture that, one of the parcels that's actually on US 192, we have talked to OUC about putting that back on the market so it goes back on the tax rolls, because they don't need frontage for their operation.
Okay.
So we have talked about that.
And then I get weekly concerns from the neighbors in the neighborhood to the east. It's usually from the noise, the hour of the noise coming from the mixed plants. So I don't think this will be opening up at 5:00 in the morning for fleet maintenance, but the fleet maintenance building is right on the main road, on 15, so I just wanted to make sure we're.
Yes, sir. The fleet maintenance is there, but the maintenance is normally just during the daylight hours.
Yeah.
The warehousing is actually faced to the west, so it's on the back of house. So I don't think you'll have an issue, and then there's some offices above the fleet maintenance in the warehousing area.
Yeah, I didn't know, between the two buildings, I didn't know which one was the one with.
So the rounder building, I don't remember which architect, we had this big conversation. The building that's more round, that's their office facilities for their daily facilities and interaction with the public. There'll be a catwalk above that goes for the trucks to drive under that will connect that building to the upstairs above the fleet maintenance, where there's offices as well for the fleet side of the operation. And then the actual warehousing is to the west of that.
Okay. All right. I think that was all my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
You made me think of something, Mr. Trace. So when we've had these, I mean, not quite this, but when we have similar type projects come through, you know, the big things that come is noise, and then the dark sky, you know, is an issue, you know, so we don't, we're not blaring lights that people, or having lights so bright that people on the roadway are affected by it, so I'm sure you're going to do all that. And then is the maintenance inside, or is it open air?
No, ma'am, it's inside structure.
So it's inside the structure? Okay. That's good.
And there's also, besides the structures themselves, there's noise abatement walls along those structures. So the walls continue, but because of the oak trees and they wanted to create more of a inviting for the office building, we stopped the walls once we got to the office building so that all the oak trees and everything that were saving can be part of a park for the community.
And we're not doing, like, metal buildings, right?
They provided elevations for you.
I know, but that's what shows up on the ground.
Yeah. And then since you showed up instead of just a finance person or whatever, the secondary access south of the OUC laydown is kind of in the curve of Hickory Tree there.
Can you put the plan back up?
I know you hate it when you actually provide these kind of details. So on one of the plans I have, there's an access point on the south side of the fleet area. I just want to make sure, because that, if the trucks are coming out of there and they kind of come out slow, people come flying up that road and.
Yes, sir. We meet the separation criteria amazingly to put a signal there, so if we do have exiting vehicles there and we put a, just same thing that we did at Road and Bridge on Oakland Creek Road, where we started with the signal just being during the morning hours and the afternoon hours when they're coming and going. But we set it up to where we have an access on Tileston. So Tileston will be where they come in, and that's where the fuel pump area is, so that's more of an exit area for them. But if it's not safe, then we'll have them exit out on Tileston. So we have the site set up so truck wraps, they can wrap anywhere on the site.
Okay, and that's. Okay, and that's already an industrial.
Yes, sir.
Road, so, okay. Right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion in regard to ordinance number 2021-10? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, Councilmember Askew, second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Could I entertain a motion for ordinance number 2021-11?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Matheny, second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I make a motion for the approval of ordinance number 2021-12. Could I have a second?
Second.
Blackwell made the motion, Councilmember Askew made the second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, would you please read item number six?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-35, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, rezoning 22.97 acres identified as 1750 and 1770 Drew Liner Road from agriculture to R-1B, single-family residential compatible with low-density residential, future land use designation located north and west of Nova Road and west of Ranch Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a request for a zoning map amendment for 1750 and 1770 Drew Liner Road. The subject properties are approximately 22.97 acres and are generally located north and west of Nova Road and west of Ranch Road. The request is to change the zoning from agricultural to load, I'm sorry, agriculture to R1B, single-family residential. The proposed request is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a gra, graphic representation of the existing zoning. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. Notice of public hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject properties and was advertised as required by state statute. However, since the time of the staff reports distribution, we did receive one written Honorable before May 13, 2021, staff recommended approval of ordinance 2021-35. The planning commission also recommended approval of ordinance 2021-35 at their meeting on June 15, 2021. As such, we are requesting that city council approve this request for a zoning map amendment for 1750 and 1770 Drew Liner Road for ordinance 2021-35. At this time, staff is available for questions, and I do believe the applicant is also present here tonight.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Council. Sean Hendo, Hanson Walter and Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741, representing the applicant and owner and available to answer any questions. But if you ask difficult questions, then I have brought our, the project environmentalist and the project engineer to assist in those questions.
All right. Would, I believe we have people in the audience that would like to speak to this. Shirley Hood.
Can I let my daughter go first? She's also.
Lisa.
Klepper.
Is that? Klepper or Klepper?
Klepper. Klepper.
Hi, my name is Lisa Klepper, and I live at 908 Michigan Avenue, but I own property at 1752 up the road. Just one thing, a quick little correction in your description, the road is not Ranch Road, it's RS Ranch Road, just FYI. So anyway, I did send a letter, because I was out of town when they had the meeting for the planning meeting about this, and I do want to bring a few things. I don't know if they forwarded the letter on to you guys or not. Okay, well, I do have a copy of it, so I can make copies for everybody if they would like it. But there is a multitude of environmental issues, and I know they addressed some of them based on what I put in my letter, but not all of them. There are Panthers out there. We had a picture of the backend of a Panther caught out there. There is an eagle out there. I know they said the eagle is more than 0.8 miles away from where this property is, but that's its foraging ground. Okay, so we've already had building on the east side of where my property is. So now my, east side of my property floods because you build on a wetland, which is what this all was before. You build on a wetland, water's got to roll somewhere. So now it's higher on this side and it's flooding my property as well as my parents who live next door. So now if we're going to go to the west side of me and let's build some property, homes over there, now I'm going to get to have it from the west side of my property. So it's, it's already an issue right now. I just, the thought of them removing more of the fields is ridiculous when they say that it's in line with the homes that are around there. It's in line with the homes because they've already mitigated the wetlands, which is a joke in and of itself, but they mitigated the wetlands already once, and now you want to try to do this again and, and put more homes in there. It's just, it's not, it's not appropriate. It's not appropriate for that area. There, there is a ton of wildlife out there and we're just taking their homes away. And animals, my parents have lived there for almost 40 years, the animals that we used to see all the time with the fox, squirrel, you know, I was so excited when I saw one the other day, because I haven't seen one in years, because they keep taking their environment. Same with the scrub jay, same with the eagle, same with the panther, you know, we're, we're taking their environment. They have nowhere to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shirley, Shirley Hood.
My name is Shirley Hood, and I live at 1758 RS Ranch Road adjacent to the property involved and have lived there for 40 years. I am here to object to any change in zoning from agriculture to, to the R1B. These two parcels of land, 1950 and 1970 Drew Liner Road, it's just, that's always been large acres in the area. Then they put in the development and said they're not going to be anymore. Then they go ahead and rezone the swampland on the other south of us, add in five feet of fill, and then they're making our land get wet because they're adding five feet on the other side of us. Now they want to add to the back part of the property. I don't think it's right, and if there's any rezoning, great, or it should not be this zoning. You want to zone it for one acre estates or something to go down from. Most of us on that street Drew Liner, we're really off Drew Liner, but we have RS Ranch Road. We had to put in another road behind us in order to get in. But it shouldn't be this here because we were there for 40 years. Then they come in and then start rezoning to the development on the east or west side of us, and then now they want to do the other side. Now they want to do back of us and just squeeze us in, raise the water level for our property because they have to build, add up five foot of fill in there and then start flooding us out. And that's not right. And this is a picture of a, it's, it's environmentally, environmental area there. This is one of the tortoises that is there. This is a picture my husband took from the driveway. There are, and they had a survey done. The survey was done, they didn't put anything at the meeting there for when we went to the first initial planning meeting. All they did was put, public comment was given. That was me, I went and objected, but they could at least say that I went in and objected to the zoning. The other partial, partial minutes of their, of their meeting is a letter was presented from my daughter Lisa. She's bought the property next to us, seven acres, we have five acres. And it doesn't even say she objected to it, you know, it just said she, she was there. But there were objections to this change in zoning because the reason we live there is because we appreciate the, we know that there is animals in, in the woods near us because it's an environmental area, and we live with the animals freely. Now you're just putting them all out of their environment, and, and it is an environmental sensitive area there. If you take the time to look or call, I'm out of time, but if you take the time to call the Environmental Protection Agency for the State of Florida, you'll see that it is an environmental sensitive area, and they have already some of that land that has been donated to them, but not the property that they're supposed to donate, the, this portion that, that is in question here. There is another portion that, it's not developed, but it, they raised the level of the land there so that they're flooding out the other properties there.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing.
Can you, can you leave that picture that you showed to the?
The turtle?
Just hand it to Melissa right there if you could. Thank you.
Yeah. That is the turtle that's there.
And that letter.
It's the ones that are environmentally sensitive.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to item number six? Would the applicant like to respond to any of the concerns that have been shared?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean Hendo, Hanson Walter and Associates. The, as, as far as the drainage, all of our, our drainage is contained within our parcel. So we don't have any lots stranding out, we don't have any drainage that's directed away from our, our project. Everything's to the end. We did expand the pond, not for drainage purposes, but for financial, so we took a couple lots out for the owner, just because of, we didn't want to have to infill dirt into the property. So the pond itself, we were discharging less volume in, in peak rate in the post-development than it does currently in its current state. So it's all been designed properly to do that. As far as the flooding they're experiencing on Ranch Road and Drew Liner, our drainage doesn't go towards either. It does go towards the wetland to the north, which does wrap around these properties on Ranch, but we'll make sure that there's a positive outfall to that, to that wetland system so there's no adverse impacts to the adjacent properties. The, we don't have any access to Ranch Road or to Drew Liner, with the exception that staff has asked us to make an emergency access off Drew Liner. Our access actually comes through the adjacent development that Lennar did. So we have two local roads that we're extending into our project, and we'll access from those two local roads. And we will access through those subdivisions off Nova Road. So we won't be accessing off Drew Liner, and we will not have the ability for any resident to use Drew Liner because we are going to chain gate that. We were going to put up diamond plates and blockades, but we'll, we're going to put up a chain gate because they wanted it for emergency access. As far as the environmental issues, Randy Hanson, or, excuse me, Randy Austin is here, and he's, he's investigated the entire property, and he can address any of those questions
Randy Austin with Austin Environmental Consultants, 316 Church Street in Kissimmee, Florida, 34741. We have conducted two environmental reviews of the property, one at the beginning of the eagle nesting season and one at the end of the eagle nesting season. We, there is no eagle nest on or adjacent to the property. There is an eagle nest that is more than 660 feet from the property. 660 feet is the maximum radius of effect of an eagle nest as per the National Bald Eagle Guidelines. So this, the site has no ability to coordinate on eagles because we are outside of any protection zone for an active bald eagle nest. We have coordinated with the Fish and Wildlife Service. Most of the Panthers in Florida are radio collared. We have checked to see if there was any record of any sightings or recordings of Panthers in that area. There are none. We have conducted an interview with the property owner. He has never seen a panther on the property. He does see bobcats out there, which are sometimes confused with Panthers, but if there's any evidence for a panther, I would like to see it, but we haven't been able to find any. As far as the gopher tortoises, they will be, we will obtain a permit to relocate the tortoises to a permitted off-site recipient site and relocate those tortoises before any ground disturbing activities occur. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to respond.
Okay, so the, the eagles are protected to zones of 100 feet, 330 feet, and 660. So the 100 feet is a non-disturbant zone, the 330 is your first protection zone, and 660 is your ultimate protection zone. The eagle's nest that is in this area is over 4,000 feet away, so it's not adjacent to the site and it's not on this property. So there's nothing that we could do on this property in accordance with those guidelines for anything associated with the eagle. There may be some, some use of the eagles of, of the trees or the swamp. It's, it's normally more on an open water, so, so they'll normally go to trees by open water to, to eat their food. If, most of you, if you know my house, top of my house is where they love to go as well because I'm near water and I have an eagle's nest behind me, and, and they land on the top of my house and they feed their babies. So, so the eagles, they, they, there's difference between urban eagles and rural eagles, and it's really not a joke. If they adapt to the area, they're not skittish and they're urban eagles. If they, if they're not capable of adapting, they typically will move their nest to an area like, into the swamp, if there's a tall tree that, that they could use, so they're, they're more buffered away from people and, and things. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion by council? Councilmember Trace?
I'd rather the eagle not have to move because we moved in, but that's a different thing, I guess. It's far enough away already. On the flooding side of things, it looks like Drew Liner is kind of the high point and it kind of goes off from there. So is there any off-site drainage that's coming on to this property that would be blocked by any development of it?
Yeah, there is a small portion of off-site that we're accepting that is actually at Drew Liner Road, so we'll have outlets to accept that water, and, and we're actually going to bring it into our pond instead of circulating around us. So by state law, you're allowed to do one of two things. You can bypass the flow around you and allow it just to continue to flow like it does. If you bring it onto your site, then you have to provide water quality treatment for it. So we're, we've designed our system to bring that water into it, our site and provide the additional water quality before it, it goes out into the, the mitigation or conservation area.
Okay. And with the backup we get, it doesn't have any wetland maps or anything like that, but are you anticipating impacting wetlands there or?
Yes, on the very north end of the site, a wetland comes into the property as part of the larger wetland system. It's a French, it's a class-three wetland, and we will be requested to mitigate, mitigate that through South Water Water Management District.
Okay.
Either else. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So the resident mentioned that there's five feet of fill out there on these properties. Is, is that how much fill is going on out there?
No, ma'am.
It's actually.
It's more than five feet?
Not on our property, on, maybe on the adjacent property, but not on our property. So we're actually transitioning their property down to ours. If you, if you put it in the smaller pond, you have to raise it more to create the same thing, we increase the size of the pond.
And I think on that other property, the pond is way far away from where the furthest point is, so just to get the water there, I think they had just had to raise it up too much, which is a problem.
Yeah. So this is kind of a.
Yeah, and then it's the, the front of that development is at Nova Road, so it's a, a long way to go.
So this is actually kind of a topic that I want to discuss with the city manager on a, on a different occasion, but whenever we have these developments that are now coming in and they're putting five, six, eight feet of fill on them, we need to have, in my opinion, more of a buffer on the property line and not let the development, you know, fill eight feet up and then just come straight down to the property line. It always causes problems, and we need to, I mean, this is a separate conversation I'd like to have maybe at the workshop, to create more of a buffer along the edge. to create more of a buffer along the edge. So yeah, that is always a problem when you get a bunch of dirt. I don't care what everybody tells you. I deal with it all the time at work. Every time you come and put in all that dirt, you always impact the surrounding areas and you're mounding the pond and you're creating all these things. So I'm glad to hear you're not putting a huge amount of fill on the property. And then Ms. Dunklin said there was a letter. So the letter is this letter that she mentioned? Okay. So I didn't get a copy of it beforehand.
Yes, ma'am. And we're following more of the county details on that. So anything that, with the county, if you fill more than three feet, you have to do a four-to-one slopes instead of a three-to-one. So we've set the exterior units back in case there is any fill on any slope adjustments. We're not going to put walls or anything like that. So the fill is going to be regulated and we'll see what we can do to make sure it stays low.
Yeah, the county rules aren't good either, so.
Yeah, but again.
I just think like there needs to be something like, if you're bringing in more than, this is kind of a sidebar. If you're bringing in more than two feet of fill, then for every foot you're going up, you need to be 10 feet away from the property line. You know, so there's adequate areas. I've seen too many neighborhoods that just slope straight down and then you leave people in a hole right behind the development. But okay, that was really my other thing was I just wanted to make sure that was the letter is the one that Ms. Klepper had mentioned.
Do we have any other question?
I'm fine having a workshop about that and setting some of those standards.
Could I entertain a motion for ordinance number 2021-35?
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance 2135?
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Brings us to item number seven. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number seven?
Public hearing for resolution number 2021-063R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate an adult congregate living facility use on a 3.17 acre property located east of Old Canoe Creek Road and north of Fifth Street as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The request before you is for a conditional use permit for Old Canoe Assisted Living Facility on approximately 3.17 acres, generally located east of Old Canoe Creek Road and north of Fifth Street. The existing zoning of the property is highway business and the future land use designation is commercial. The proposed use is allowed in the Highway Business zoning district. The use of adult congregate living facility is allowed as a conditional use. The proposed development is compatible with the general development pattern in the area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goal for growth management. Honored before May 13th, 2021, DRC and staff recommended approval of resolution 2021-063R. Planning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting on June 15th, 2021. As such, we are requesting that City Council approve resolution 2021-063 for the conditional use for Old Canoe Creek Assisted Living Facility at this time. Staff is available for questions and I believe the applicant is also present and available for any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Justin Hamm with Kimley Hornin Associates here on behalf of the owner, or the applicant. We agree with the staff's report and the Planning Commission request for approval and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. All my other fellow council members, I'm sure you're familiar with this location on the way to the post office and it is heavily treed, big, big trees on this property. So I do know that our arborist went out and evaluated the site. I saw the email today. I think there's eight trees that are indicated as they have to be preserved. But I definitely want, you know, I mean, I think assisted living facility is a great use. I'm happy with that. I just want to make sure we're not just going to raise the trees and pay into the tree bank. You know, that's just not for me like equitable. And so I definitely want us to like listen to the arborist's recommendations about the trees that need to be saved. They said that the majority of the trees are along the perimeter, so they should be able to be preserved. But yeah, it's a big, big old trees on this property.
Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so we have conducted a tree survey and are looking into that, into the design and seeing how that fits along with the trees that need to preserve. I know there's a lot of trees on the site. A lot of them are diseased or decayed or fallen and things like that. But there are some that we intend to keep as much as possible. We don't try and just knock down as many trees as we can. So through our design process, we'll make sure that we keep as many as we can and in that fit for our site as well.
What's the city manager, what's the policy for trees here in the city? Like if they wanted to take every tree down, is that allowable?
There's a permitting process that goes through Parks and Rec and they evaluate that through the arborist. Mike, do you have any more detail on that?
Right, but if they just said, here's my money, I'm taking all the trees down, is that allowed?
Good evening. Mike Tenaro, Deputy Parks and Recreation Director. Based on what the permit says, if it is allowed, it is. Whether they pay into the tree bank or he chooses to request for preservation of the trees, that will happen, hopefully. But again, he did do his initial evaluation just the other day as a request and he found the trees that he believes should stay. Other than that, I'm not really sure.
But I guess, just so I have it clear in my mind, if somebody came and said, I want to take every tree out and here's my check, do we allow that?
I would. I would go to Andre on that question or the planning department on that.
I'm going to have to do some more research and get back to the council on that because I think you're correct. I think the assumption's correct.
I think they can.
I believe that is correct.
I just need to do some more research on that.
So do you have any suggestion how we move it forward? I like this assisted living facility, but I want to preserve the trees too and make sure that that's taken into some consideration. Mr. Manzares, I bet you have an idea.
Mr. Manzares?
Well, it is a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit by very nature allows the council to put conditions on the approval. That's what, obviously that's why it's called a conditional use permit. So if you could formulate something that would satisfy you as a council with regard to the trees, it would be nice if you had the tree survey in front of you so you can at least you can get a feel for it right tonight. But obviously you don't have that. You could have them leave it up to the arborist to approve a tree survey. The city's arborist is pretty much committed to saving trees. So, you know, you could direct that a tree survey as part of a condition of the approval that the arborist shall approve a tree survey that preserves as many of the trees on site as possible, other than the ones that are diseased, of course.
Does this come back to us for any other approvals?
Well, I don't think it'll come back for any other approvals. I don't think so, no.
I don't know how the other council feels about my tree comment, but do we postpone this until they can work with the arborist and have a tree survey and come back with a plan?
Councilmember Trace?
So part of it is, the only reason they're here is it's a conditional use. So if they would have just had a different medical office building or whatever else is allowed by right and highway business, it wouldn't have come to us at all. So there are other cities and counties that have different regulations with historic and specimen trees. And if you take out a, you know, certain number or you're clear cut, you have to come back and it's a whole formal process, even if you have by right zoning. So that's something to look into if you want.
Yeah, I thought we brought this up before about trees and that there were Tree City and we didn't want it, you know. I thought this came up when we were dealing with Tohoku taking all the trees out. And I know that was permitted through the county, but then we talked about it relative to the city, but it just hasn't moved forward from the city perspective.
I could have sworn we changed it and raised the bar some, but there is the, you know, some of the properties like this probably wouldn't even be developable if you had to save every single thing. So it's a matter of saving what's in good health, in a good location. Because even if you do those tree wells around it, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, just depending on how you prepare the roots, how you go through all that stuff.
Well, that's why I don't want to say you have to save all eight of them because I don't know how the site lays out and I don't know where the trees are and I don't know what size they are. That's why I'm suggesting that we potentially delay this.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I mean, our intent is to review the tree survey. We have the concept plan of how we have the site laid out and then saving as many trees as possible if that means moving. We've kind of adjusted some of the stormwater ponds to save some of those larger oak trees that are on the south side, things of that nature. So we are looking at that. We have noticed that, obviously that site does have quite a few trees on it. So that was a concern even from our aspect or our design in taking that into consideration and how do we make sure to preserve for the aesthetics, even for the facility itself, right, to preserve some of those natural larger oak trees that are in there. So that is our intent in the design of this site.
I know it's their intent, but they might not do it. Not saying you're misleading us, but you know, we see a lot of times people come in.
Councilmember Rescue?
Yeah, no offense against the intent. I've had many people come up here and let us know their intent and then after it's built, we go, wow, that was not the intent that we were thinking. But if there's some way of, you know, I guess Keith or the arborist and just kind of, you know, if you could show us what you're going to do on that and sort of on that property. I'd hate to just come to say, hey, will you trust you? Don't take any trees out. I just haven't seen that yet. So it would just be nice to have some kind of good feeling of we're going to be saving this many trees or we're going to try to adjust this or do something like that. Your word, no offense, I just, I've been up here long enough to realize that what your intent is or what our intent is, sometimes two different things, especially if I don't see a picture or some written, something that's written or in a contract form.
Is there some way we can empower the arborist, our arborist, to make a decision?
Well.
I was going to say.
Power the city manager, you could. But remember, there is a code provision that deals with trees on new development properties. And they do have, and I was just glancing at it quickly, I apologize, I'm not as familiar with it. But there is a requirement that deals with the existing trees and the maintenance of the existing trees and the needs for surveys and all. That's all in your code already. So they will, they're not seeking any variance from that, so they're going to have to meet the city code the way the city code is right now, whether that allows them to retain as many trees as would make, because there is a lot of trees on this property or not is not the case. But there is a minimum requirement that you're going to have to meet. So short of just relying on the code, you could, as I said earlier, you could either have a tree survey that's reviewed and approved by the city arborist and the city manager and to helpfully preserve what the city council has expressed tonight with regard to the preservation of as many trees as possible.
Councilmember Matheny?
I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the next council meeting so that we can have more information on the trees and the trees they're planning to save and the arborist reports.
We have a motion for continuance to the August 12th.
I'll second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Can I just add to that for us to have, in that infamous workshop we're talking about, talk through this?
Absolutely.
Because the only reason this is coming to us is it's a conditional use.
Right.
If it was a first thing that is a permitted use there, aluminum products sales and contractor, it would not have come to us.
Right. And it is on the to-do list of the city. It's just, I guess, we need to prioritize it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that brings us to item number eight.
Public hearing. Sorry. Public hearing for resolution number 2021-106R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a gymnastic health spa facilities used on a 0.903 total acres property located on Lot 6 and Lot 7 on Park Commerce Court, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The request before you is for a conditional use permit for Soldier City Fitness on approximately 0.903 acres, generally located on Lot 6 and 7 on Park Commerce Court. The existing zoning is industrial two and the future land use designation is industrial. The proposed use of gymnastic health spa gym is allowed as a conditional use in the I-2 zoning district. The proposed development is compatible with the development pattern in the area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for economic development and growth management. Honored before May 20th, 2021, DRC and staff recommended approval of resolution 2021-106R at their meeting on June 15th, 2021. Planning Commission also recommended approval. And likewise, we are requesting that City Council approve this request of approval for resolution 2021-106R for Soldier City Fitness. At this time, staff is available for questions and I believe the applicant is also present and available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening. Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I am here representing the applicant. The owner is here as well as the engineer and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have in reference to this application.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a, first of all, I have a question, Mr. Trace.
What's the plan for the rest of the property?
The other lot?
Yeah.
They don't have any plans yet.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, could you read item number nine?
Public hearing for resolution number 2021-151R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2020-215R, which adopted the fiscal year 2020/21 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager as certified. There are prior year funds balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not included in the original 2020/21 budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding and various funds making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening. Wendy Collazo, Finance Director. As per City Code Section 2212, during the fiscal year, as the manager certifies, that there's available funding and appropriation. This is Budget Amendment Number Four. The city manager is certifying that funds are available to appropriate funds and I'll walk you through the multiple items through the various funds for this budget amendment. Beginning off, in the General Fund, we're increasing by 200,000. These increases for 200,000 is for recognizing revenue for federal grants. This was received for the reimbursement, excuse me, of the awarded CDBG block grants. We are also, of course, increasing expenditures to 200,000 in service of the CDBG for the remainder of this fiscal year. Increasing in the City Clerk, we're doing election cost. We are reducing council contingency by 75,000 in order to fund such election costs. We're also increasing by 15,000 for tuition reimbursement costs. We're also increasing by $15,000 for tuition reimbursement costs, reimbursement costs, and reducing council contingency by such amount at $15,000, which will be available for the fiscal year 2021 year. Also included in that $200,000 increase, building maintenance, we are increasing in the Department of Improvements, we're decreasing again council contingency by $500,000 in order for the JUF roof replacement. In the capital projects, there will be an increase of $186,434. This is an increase to the inter-fund transfers for professional services for the expenditures for project number P, as in Papa R, as in Romeo, 2106, 17th Street Ballfields Park Impact Fee Funded, meaning funds are coming from the impact fee to the capital fund for Moving quite along, again, parks and impact fee fund, we see a zero increase, this is where you'll see the $186,436 come out of the park and impact fee fund in order to fund the capital project, as mentioned before, PR 2106. In the water fund, a net increase of zero, increasing operating supplies and expenditures, we're decreasing contingency by $300,000 for the additional funding for project number W, as in whiskey, A as in alpha, 2101, the new meter installations, and then increasing professional service expenditures by decreasing contingency by $180,000 for the engineering consultants, excuse me, for GIS support. In the sewer fund, a net increase of zero, we're increasing contractual services expenditures by decreasing contingency by $200,000 for project number Whiskey, Whiskey 2119, Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. Moving along, in the self-insurance health fund, there's a net increase of zero, we're increasing in the health administrative fee by $600,000 due to the cost of increased claims. We're also increasing insurance expenditures by $200,000 for the increase in the Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, also known as COBRA, for fiscal year 2021, and decreasing the contingency overall to cover these expenditures by $260,000. Economic development, a zero net increase when we decrease federal grant revenues and decrease, excuse me, grant and aid expenditures. We are decreasing them by $838,858. We are expecting this from the CDBG funding, this was placed in the N Economic Development Fund, originally the 630, in budget amendment one. Since then, we have determined that these revenues should reside in the general fund for administrative cost allocation coverages, and therefore, we are doing this with budget amendment number four. Staff is recommending approval, resolution 2121150R Romeo, and requests city council for approval of such resolution as well. Let me know if you have any questions of any of those items.
Or is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. It's great, we're replacing the roof on that joint-use facility, it inspires a lot, it's so long. My question is on the meter install, are these replacing existing meters, or are these new meters, and we just, the way we budget it, we have to?
New meters, and they, we normally get the revenue back anyway through tap fees, so we'll have that back.
All right, thank you.
Have any other questions?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, Councilmember Trace, second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I guess that's assuming the next item passes with that budget transfer, but.
That brings us to council action, item number one.
Resolution number 2021-170R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a task authorization to be continuing contract and agreement for professional engineering services with Osceola Engineering, Inc., dated September 14, 2017, and any amendments thereto for civic, civil engineering, land surveying, geotechnical engineering, building, architecture, electrical engineering, structure engineering, and landscaping architecture services associated with the 17th Street T-ball and baseball field improvements in the city of St. Cloud, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Michael Tenaro, Deputy Parks Recreation Director. I'm here to present the task authorization for Osceola Engineering for the Civic Spinner Ball Field Expansion Project. As already read from our slide, this task authorization is for civil engineering, land surveying, geotechnical engineering, building, electrical, structure, landscape, architecture services, and services during construction. If you have any questions for me, I'll try and answer them, and also John Porter is here from OEI, if you have any specific questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Hendo?
Good evening, Sean Hendo, Hanson Walter Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. Last night, I had the honor to meet our junior baseball team from city of St. Cloud. They had, they've gone undefeated in both regionals and sectionals, they're one of eight teams that will be representing the city of St. Cloud. They left for Clearwater this morning, and they'll be playing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in a pool play competition. So, we, they had some financial fun issues, so we funded their trip over there, and I just wanted to let you know, you guys are represented by a really, really good team and solid families, so.
And they are incredibly grateful for your generous support.
Sorry you have to be here with us instead of over there tonight.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you, and we also, we also sponsored the girls, I don't know if it's a different team, it was Jenin, the Jenins, it was the girls' team, but I thought they already went, but we also sponsored, they were able to find a couple thousand dollars to help fund the trip, and so we're really happy. I know they're going to come back to council when they get back into town and things.
Show us their trophy.
Show us. So, I wanted to say to Parks and Rec, thank you so much for bringing this forward, I know I brought this up in a meeting and got support of the council to move forward with finding more ballfields out there, because it's, there's not enough, and the kids are playing really late, I think they were saying games are going until 10, 11 o'clock at night, and I, I mean, I couldn't get up and go to school after I was up that late, but I did want to say to Osceola Engineering, which I'm sure you're taking into consideration, where's Mr. Porter, parking, so, you know, when we put these additional fields, we need to think about the parking, so I don't know if we can allow the overflow parking to go into our senior center that's nearby in the evenings, but just kind of keep the parking in mind, because I know that that gets full as well, but I'm excited, glad it's on here. And I had asked when it got brought up, just so you know, that we had this all done by the time the next season starts, so you better, you gotta, you gotta move quick.
Yes. This field does have a special place in my heart, too.
Could you give us your name and?
Oh, John Porter, Osceola Engineering, 1003 Florida Avenue. I grew up playing baseball on these fields, so it's cool to be a part of a project that, you know, I grew up hitting around on, so it's special for our office. Parking, there is a bridge that goes across the street to some extension parking there, we will be working with the Parks and Rec staff to talk about how the field and the area is operating now, what the parking, current parking status is, and what they may see, and try to make our best estimates on what the new field will bring as far as parents and family coming to visit, and so we'll do our best to try to keep track of all that as the project goes along.
That's great. I played on this field, too, when I was in Little League, and I think it's exactly the same.
I remember it being busy, busy when I played.
Yeah, I think I practiced in a park a lot over there, so anyways, thank you, I look forward to this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
So, on the fields themselves, the 220s or the Little League fields, what's the 172 field, is that just practice only, or can they play regulation on the short field?
Is that T-ball?
No, they can play, they can play T-ball. Several of these fields will be softball and baseball, but the T-ball will be able to play on the 170.
Okay, because I didn't know if it needed it to pipe the ditch to make the field bigger, I don't know if we went through kind of that cost benefit, it's just not going to work.
No.
Okay, so as long as you guys are fine with that shorter field, then that's good.
I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of resolution number 2021170R. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
So, city manager, when we brought this up, we also talked about trying to find some additional city property where they could do practice, for practice availability. We had any success in that?
Michael? Yeah.
Just like kind of short-term to allow like some practice areas?
Well, we do have practice fields at other locations, located at Hopkins, Opie Johnson, and we could actually look into possible, I understand, it's the time problem, possible temporary lighting or portable lighting, so that they can practice a little bit later at those fields, those fields, of course, do not have lights at this time, and also at our T-ball fields, there are no lights, which we hope to get accomplished with this project, so, other than that, there's no actual ball fields for that.
I did talk to this halt camp about the temporary lighting situation, you know, because right now we're in, we have extra light, but we did talk about that.
Okay, just don't forget that part of it.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read item number two?
Resolution number 2021-177R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater agreement from Park Square Enterprise LLC for a 76-unit residential development named Brixton Townhomes, located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County, on the south side of Jack Brack Road, north of Jones Road, east of Narcusi Road, and west of Sunni Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
I'm Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. As she mentioned, this is for Brixton Townhomes, 77, or 76 residential units, and it's located where she stated, so the, you can see, this is the development that we're talking about, and then the city limits here, so it's fairly far away from the city limits, and as required, it's, we must bring it to you, because it's outside the city limits. So, the usual requirements, the garage setbacks, 25 feet, each single-family residence will be required to have four and a half parking spaces, minimum of 1,500 square feet of air-conditioned living area, excluding the garage, and prior to issuing any certificate of capacity, the city will receive and review a copy of the recorded declaration of deeds, covenants, and restrictions. And then, the architectural elevations and facades of the homes shall vary from adjacent homes, and include self-regulating monotony clause whereby no more than two models of the same type, paint, color, and elevation shall be adjacent or across the street, and of course, air conditioner pads, condensing units will be staggered, and a minimum of two trees per lot. Staff recommends water and sewer approval of this agreement, the water sewer capacity are available, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Is the applicant here? My, we're busy tonight.
Don't let me sleep anymore. Good evening, Sean Hendo, Hanson Walter Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, 34741. Representing the applicant, I'm available to answer if you have any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I don't know, during my gender review, I brought up the fact that I was wanting to add in two more conditions, to have the community maintain the trees if they're in the street, and also sidewalks, and I don't know if that got mentioned to you, Mr. Matheny, I know I brought it up in my gender reviews, I don't know if anybody reached out to the applicant regarding that. I guess not.
Well, if they did, they reached out to my engineer, so I just let him go home. The trees are no issue, it's all common maintenance. The right-ofways, there's some right-ofways that are privately maintained, some alleys, because we created some rear-loaded units and some units on a muse. As far as the sidewalks and stuff, that's really up to Osceola County, if they want us to maintain them, I don't think we'd have any issue with that, because we're maintaining everything else in the development as common maintenance.
I'd like to add that into, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve, but to add two conditions, to maintain the street trees and maintain the sidewalks.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, you go ahead, I'm sorry, it's real light.
Can we back up a couple slides here? Okay, one more, couple, four, there we go, hold up right there. This is new wording to me, I guess. Each single-family residence will have four and, the four and a half parking spots, or HOA documents containing language prohibiting it. We, I don't know of an HOA that has any documents prohibiting on-street parking that works, so if you can show me one that actually works, that would be fantastic, but generally, even if they have those documents, they're still parking on the streets. So, are you doing 4.5, or are you doing HOA?
Yeah, we have an excess of 4.5.
Okay.
And that's all planned for parallel parking.
Okay, that's the first time I've seen that little, kind of little maneuver in there.
Well, hey, Mr. Askew, I'll add to my motion and strike, the HOA documents will contain language prohibiting on-street parking.
Okay, I'll second.
Can we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny? Would you state your conditions again, with a second from Councilmember Askew?
So, strike, the HOA documents will contain language prohibiting on-street parking, have the community maintain street trees, and have the community maintain the sidewalks.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Item number three.
Resolution number 2021-183R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service annexation and development agreement from Edgewater Property Florida Holdings LLC, a mixed-use development located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County, west of the Florida Turnpike, north and south of Clay Whaley Road, and east of Lake Toho Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I know staff's presentation on this item is pretty extensive, so it might be better wait for Mr. Trace to return before they get started, if that would be okay.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Oh, he's not here, I'll try to ask him something. We need to ask. Get out of here. Yeah, I guess it's my turn. Mayor? Excuse me. Since we went into a holding pattern, can I go back to the last thing, I have a question. Since we had that added, amended to the resolution, is that the direction of the council moving forward, don't bring anything with HOA, make sure the street trees and the sidewalks are taken care of by the community? That seems amazing. I just want to make sure, because that's specific to that, I just want a clear direction that you want that on all future?
Yes, please.
Water sewer agreements.
I struggle with this, because it's, to me, it's not the right document for that sort of thing. You might want to call it a pre-annexation agreement or something, to where it's not the utility service as an enterprise fund, putting those restrictions on it, to me, I've always struggled with that, and we keep on adding and adding and adding restrictions on something for the water use, but.
That wasn't helpful, thank you. Actually was.
Well, we can address that issue when the next time it comes up, so I could just stick with the item we're on right now.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Planning and Zoning Manager. The applicant is requesting approval of a water and wastewater service annexation and development agreement to develop the Edgewater project. The applicant, Edgewater Property Holdings LLC, agrees to construct certain oversizing of infrastructure, dedicate right-of-way, and a fire station site in exchange for fire and mobility impact fee credits. The entire property is comprised of approximately 1,000 The entire property is comprised of approximately 1,527 acres and is generally located west of the Florida's Turnpike in the unincorporated area of Osceola County. Per our joint planning agreement with Osceola County, the city adopted the county's mixed-use policies, which include the East of Lake Toho Conceptual Master Plan and the Mixed Use Code Language within our land development code. The Conceptual Master Plan is implemented through approved concept plans, subdivision plans, and site development plans. There is an existing approved Edgewater Concept Plan on file with the county, which is referenced in Exhibit C2 of this agreement. Planning staff compared the preliminary subdivision plans that were submitted to the county for review to the approved Edgewater Concept Plan and found that they were consistent aside from the adjustments to the approved fine-grain network. A revision to the Edgewater Concept Plan is currently proceeding through the county's review process, and staff will continue to monitor the proposed revision to the Concept Plan and associated preliminary subdivision plans throughout the process. It's a little blurry, but this is the list of the agreements that the city has agreed to not annex until these applications have been approved by the county or nine months after the effective date of disagreement, whichever is first. The applicant has agreed to upsize the water main from eight to 12 inches along Cross Prairie Parkway and install a 24-inch water main under the Turnpike. The dollar amounts shown are the differences in cost of the upsized water main and the cost of installation of the water main under the Turnpike. The applicant has also agreed to upsize the reuse water main from eight to 16 inches and upsize the sanitary sewer force main from eight to 12 inches along Cross Prairie Parkway. The differences in cost will be credited to the applicant through water and sewer impact fee credits. Here is a graphic representation of the upsizing along a portion of Cross Prairie Parkway. The blue circles represent the upsized water mains. Oh, my gosh, I can't see the circles. You can't see them there, I don't know why. Yeah, but on my copy, there were blue circles and purple circles and green circles, but you can't see them there, so hopefully you can see it on your copy if you have it right there in front of you. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask our expert, Ms. Colazo, Finance Director for the City of St. Cloud, to discuss the economic and fiscal impacts.
That's a hairy take. Good evening, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. I guess I'm going to be summarizing just the fiscal analysis that was done by Rafftilis that you had in your package. It's 12 glorious pages that I'm sure you've read through and through, and I'm just going to summarize them for you for key points. One of them is the background of the economic fiscal impact analysis. What was analyzed was obviously direct benefit and indirect, to define them. Direct benefit is anything that generates revenue based on the economy during the construction operation of this proposed project. The secondary unit is indirect and induced benefits, so these are anything that is subsequent or secondary rounds of expenditures, which would be in the form of tenants paying rent for when the project is built. That would be an indirect or induced benefit. The methodology that they used for Rafftilis use was a per capita method. This is a conservative method, and I'll just walk through very briefly. What they take is new business, and what does it create, what service needs does it create, whether more or less? An example in your report that they gave, since 2011, the population has increased, 89% of them were residential. It's increased 49% over the time span between 2011 and present. The amount of service calls that the police department has received, now there's a lot of factors, so take away all the other factors except population, they give you the example there. It has said that the amount of service calls have not increased significantly because of this 49% increase, so don't always think that just because you have population, services will always increase in the same cadence and pace. So, their process and methodology was per capita to say, if you put a certain amount of people in a certain amount of place, it should generate a certain amount of money eventually with time and your service needs. All right, so this is how they created the full-time equivalent in your paperwork, population using the per capita, meaning a person who lives and works in St. Cloud is roughly equated at 24 hours a day, seven-day periods, is considered a full-time. That is a person that lives and works here, 8,763 hours, and is considered 100% or one. Everything after that in your spreadsheet, what it shows is that if they live only in St. Cloud, they're 6,486, they're 74% of an FTE, or the 1.3, excuse me, 0.74 of an FTE. And as you can see, it works its way down, work only if a person only is a hotel visitor for 120 days, or is a visitor for four hours from an outside county or city. So, that's how they determined your FTE, which is probably the six paragraphs you read on FTEs. The background that they used, they took the current ACFR for us, right, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and the city's operating in capital requirements, right, that is reflected right now, is $903 per FTE revenue requiring. This is not including and excluding revenue sources of impact fees, so no impact fees, right? We need to, our cost is 903. Revenue sources not including impact fees are 875, meaning that we have a $28 deficit for each FTE equating to $1.6 million. Now, don't scare yourself, this does not mean, and if you read in the report, that doesn't mean we're losing $1.6 million in cash. What we're doing is, $1.6 million, eventually, we will lose money because we're, our services will grow, will won't grow in the pace that we need to support. So, our net position will get a little worse and worse and worse and worse, okay, over the years, but we're not losing money. Finally, our current, the current project and how its fiscal impact is and affects, you know, with the annexation would be that incorporating this, you take your ad valorem, you see the St. Cloud in 2020 in dollars, commensurate to the project, and you can see the change dollars. The fiscal impact to us with this method outlined and covering just general government and operating capital cost, it's estimated that it'll contribute $3.2 million every year for the life of this project. One of the biggest factors, as you have to remember in your report, is the OUC contribution is about $2.9 million of that service group. So, overall, they've analyzed it left to right for you, and this is the final fiscal impact, gaining $3.2 million for the city with the annexation of this project. I'm there, that's it. Take your weight. Thanks.
Okay. So, according to the same economic and fiscal impact analysis, the proposed jobs-to-housing ratio for the full development is 2.17, and it increases with the indirect and induced employment. Per Ordinance 2017-08, the city imposes mobility fees upon development of property. The issuance of mobility fee credits are permissible when a developer of a project has constructed, conveyed right-of-way, or paid cash for transportation facilities in order to mitigate the impact of the project. This agreement establishes that the city will play a role in reviewing any transportation impact analysis, methodology, or the TIA submittal, and it acknowledges that the property owner is entitled to mobility fee credits up to the amount paid in mobility fees, and that the rates and regulations will be determined at the time of development approval. Mobility fee credits are not established in this agreement, but this agreement memorializes that only roadway improvements that create additional transportation and mobility capacity above the amount required to serve the development itself will be eligible for credit. The actual mobility fee credits will be negotiated as part of a future tri-party agreement between the owner, the county, and the city. In addition to the standards within the mixed-use code, the applicant has agreed to certain additional development standards, which include a 25-foot setback for garages, four and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, two trees per lot, a minimum of 1,500 square feet of air-conditioned living space, staggered there AC pads, a minimum of 10 feet. All approved crosswalks will be ADA-approved at intersections, and we are requiring a self-regulating monotony clause, and we will also require that there is no on-street parking other than that that is approved as part of the four and a half parking spaces. Okay, this request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for economic development and growth management. Staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval of Resolution 2021-183R. Likewise, it is requested that City Council approve this resolution for a water and wastewater service annexation and development agreement. At this time, staff is available for questions. The applicant is also present and available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Good evening, Sean Hindle, Hanson Walter Associates, Aide Broadway, Kissimmee, 34741. I would normally give you my normal speech of saying, I'm here to represent the applicant and answer any questions, but that's not fair. The staff of the city, Bill, Veronica, Andre, Melissa, Marjorie, all their staff have bent over backwards, working with us and putting this together, and I have to say thank you. I appreciate all the efforts. It came together very quickly, and it was a very good process for us, so I appreciate it. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to the side? If not, we will entertain discussion and our motion by council. Mr. Manager, your light is on.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to say I love this project, I will. For the record, I did meet with the Edgewater folks, and they answered all my questions. I met with staff, they answered all my questions. I would make you go back a couple slides and show you the bottom one there, it said, well, parking only in approved areas. That's what we're looking for, and I appreciate the 25-foot setback, the 4.5. I appreciate the county working with the city, and the developer working with both of the county and the city, and I wish we would have more of this. So, I know this project's been on the books for a long time, a lot longer than I've been up here, so it's just to see it, to grow like that, but in growing in a way that sort of accepts some of the city's standards, and we, I appreciate that, so.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you. For the record, I also met with the applicant and discussed the project, and I did ask a few questions to them. One was regarding the price per acre for the fire station. I wanted to have some backup understanding of where that number came from, because it says that we can acquire this up to five acres in the future if we so decide at a cost of $200,000 an acre, which is, you know, a million dollars. So, I was like, where did that number come from, and what's your justification, and, you know? So, they did tell me that it was based off of their market analysis, and I had asked in my agenda review, and I was told there was an appraisal, but there wasn't, there is not an appraisal. They did agree to add language to this agreement that says that it's either $200,000 an acre or, they will get an appraisal, or appraised value whichever is less, because they said they feel confident that the $200,000 is fair market value, and they feel like, and it's a pad-ready site, so that they feel that that number is appropriate. So, I feel if we get an appraisal, at least we have some justification for that. Additionally, in the package, there wasn't much information for me regarding how this differential was created for the utilities, and the agenda item cover didn't say anything about the upsizing. You know, it was like, once I was reading the agreement, I was all the way to the back of the package, I was like, wait a minute. So, I did get emailed to me today, an engineer's estimate signed and sealed, which I had requested that as well. I talked to the applicant about maintaining the trees and the sidewalks within the community, and they agreed to that concession as well. And I think that was kind of the sum total of our conversation, so it was, they agreed to get an appraisal, and then the cost, and we may or may not move forward with the fire station, that'll be decided at a later date by our fire department, that they would get an appraisal, and then it would be the $200,000 an acre pad-ready, or the appraisal whichever is less, maintaining the street trees and the sidewalks, and then I had asked to see a signed and sealed engineering estimate regarding the utility upsizing.
Councilwoman Trace?
Thank you. So, my comments are going to be taking a step back from kind of that picture. When I'm looking at this, this is a massive piece of property, and if we're going to agree to annex it, that's a big decision to have, you know, based on some of their numbers, 25% extra size of the city in one fell swoop. So, I just kind of, I do my little thing, and I run numbers. On the water sewer side of things, we're building, we're paying into the Cypress Lake water facility. Our allocation's 5 million gallons per day, which is 16,600 dwelling units, or ERUs, which is about, and then this project at around 6,000 units is 35% of that allocation. And that's a, the number for that, I don't even think is properly in our water impact fee, like, just the scale of it, it's in there, but it's not, you know, that five MGD at the $60 million it's costing is about $3,000 per ERU. Our current impact fee is $3,000 per ERU, so it doesn't even cover that, and the additional lines and all that. So, to me, giving, I know our typical agreement is for upsizing, if we force you to upsize over what you need, you know, we pay that difference because it saves us in the long run of having to do parallel lines and all that, but nowhere in here did it really prove that these lines are required for other stuff off of this property. It's so large that it needs, in my mind, some of those, some of those lines, so I didn't know, it wasn't really in the backup of, yes, we did determine that that eight-inch line, that 12-inch line, or whatever, is specifically required for this. So, I just want to go through that. So, that's on the upsize. Existing entitlements, I mean, the property is entitled in the county, so I'm fine accepting of their, you know, their concept plan. Phasing-wise, it's a little hairy for me of, you know, I know the residential has to come before the commercial, but Phase 7 tucked away in the corner is this commercial zone. I know it'll take time for that to mature, for the diverging diamond to come in, and the new interchange for the Turnpike, so hopefully that stays. And I like this existing entitlement language, because hopefully that stays there, and we can't even change it to reduce it from what the intensity is that it's going to be in that, in that zone. Transportation's one of my big questions on this. We're essentially agreeing to a blank check of mobility fee reimbursement. If it's, it's just one of those of, the specifics aren't even in here, so if we agree to have this blank agreement essentially of what upsized road, you know, I know we have to come back later, so hopefully it's just, we're agreeing to the concept of it, and then it'll come back, because even if, I did see the language in there of, it will not, the reimbursement will not exceed the amount of impact fees for the project, which is fine, but even if you have to take a step back and think about, there are impacts outside of this project that will become from the traffic of the project, like, so it shouldn't even be the 100%, it should be possibly less than that, because there will be off-site impacts that will have to be funded through other means. What else? On the, you know, we have this conversation from time to the time on the annex, don't annex, you know, based on the numbers that were just presented, per FTE, $219 of ad valorem per FTE. Our public safety cost is $484 per FTE, so it's upside down of just the fire and police that we have to provide, let alone stormwater, let alone parks. So, some of these other enterprise funds are what are funding just the public safety side of it, let alone other things. So, I've never been a fan of these Rafftilis reports, and I keep on asking these same questions, and I don't really get some of the responses on it, but that's, if I take just the 484 dollars per FTE, assuming there's 2.7 residents per unit, 5.118 mils, we need a $250,000 taxable on the home. taxable on the home to equal just the police and fire, plus a fifty-thousand-dollar, homes today exemption is a three-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar house just to provide the police and fire for the, you know, based on our tax situation. So, it's just, to me, the annexation is a little bit of concerning, the utility upsize, and then just the transportation side of things, so I kind of did my rant, I'll let someone else go. Oh, and I did meet with Mr. Hindle about the project as well, so.
Would you like to speak to any of that?
Sure. I'm going to ask Kevin to come up at the end of this, because he's going to understand some of the numbers that you crunch better than I will. As far as Mr. Matheny, absolutely, I think that's an excellent idea to do the two-hundred-thousand or appraisal whichever is less. If the property is what we think it is, then it'll be two-hundred thousand, and you either get a deal or we get less money, so I think that's a great idea. As far as trees and sidewalks, it's no issue, we'll obviously, we'll do that. The upsizing utilities. So, on upsizing utilities, this project, people say they've spent around for a while, I started working on this project in two thousand and three. So, yes, I've been intimately involved with this project for eighteen years, and it's finally getting off the ground. As far as the upsizing utilities, we did a complete analysis, hydraulic analysis, for the entire project of only serving ourself, and then we looked at the surrounding areas and what the areas needed, and then we worked with Reese Engineering, who did your master plan. So, when we looked at your model for your master plan, which is a typical model, it's not a dynamic model, it's an all-or-nothing, everything on or everything off. So, we went ahead and recreated the model. So, we spent weeks and weeks and weeks, and we created a model not only for this project, but for the entire city, including downtown, for that entire southwest portion of your city, and not your service area of your city. So, we created that model and verified the sizes that Reese Engineering was bringing. Some we adjusted and some we left, but we verified all the sizes and what would be needed. As far as those utility maps, the water plant was obviously donated by this family to the city, the raw water wells, and that's the water plant when we were originally with Tony Roper doing Edgewater. That plant itself has one service point in and out, a twenty-four-inch line that goes up Casimy Park Road, right before it gets to the turnpike, it turns to an eighteen-inch line. So, one of the main considerations and concerns of the city was, hey, if that line is ever cut or goes down, fifteen, or nine-point-six million gallons of a day of water is no longer available to the city. So, they asked us, would we put in a second access to the water to get over to Old Canoe Creek Road? So, the applicant purchased a vacant lot on Old Canoe Creek Road, and then we created a permit with the Turnpike Authority, and we're going to be extending a twenty-four-inch water main, actually a thirty-inch, twenty-four-inch, because we're going to do a jack-of-bore, but a twenty-four-inch water main to Canoe Creek Road, and it'll give you a repetitive connection. That way, if the line ever goes down on Casimy Park, your city won't be out of water. That cost, and if you see on the cost of that, the majority of that are actually all of that cost for that main, because it's not providing us services, it's just a transmission has been applied to the city, but I went ahead and took an eight-inch main out of that. We're not going to tap services off a twenty-four-inch main. The subdivisions will run off the existing tap locations that we have. The other thing with utilities is you'll see a sixteen-inch reuse main. So, as part of the reuse system, obviously, the development won't need that large of a main, and an eight-inch main would serve this development quite easily, but that doesn't help when you extend north through the Americana piece or Anthem Park. It doesn't help when you extend to Fontana to the south, or to the west on Casimy Park Road to either the Platt property or the other Whaley property. All of those projects have, are in the process of having approved, concept plans and plans through the county, so those mains are sized to service those people beyond us. For the force main, you're going to see, it's going to come back probably in about, don't want my client hear me, but five months, he wants it in four months, but in the next five months, we're, right now, he just authorized survey. So, in the city of St. Cloud, there's a restriction at, Station Forty-One? At List Station Forty-One that only has a twelve-inch pipe that goes into your plant. It's at full capacity, and we could have just replaced that pipe, but that's a Band-Aid and not a fix. So, we have Tohoku coming down that same line, we have all of those other list stations that are tied into that line, that have that line taxed, and it's basically that station runs twenty-four-seven, those pumps don't shut off. So, what we've done is we're going to construct a new force main, a sixteen-inch to Canoe Creek Road, we're going to increase it to a twenty-inch on Pine Tree to Court Avenue, and then a twenty-four-inch up Court Avenue. And the reason that it's upsizing at those locations is we're going to try to bring some other stations that go to your Station Forty-One, and we're going to bring them back south. So, we're going to tie those stations into this new force main, which frees up the capacity you need for Tohoku and some of your other developments that's not available right now, and we're going to bring those stations into this line, and then as we go onto Pine Tree, we're going to bring lines off Canoe Creek Road, stations into that line, we're going to upsize, and we get to Court, it's proposing for the future for Green Island. So, when Green Island comes in, which is part of your service area, they'll come up Court Avenue and they'll tie into that twenty-four. That line will be taken all the way to your plant and brought into an existing twenty-four-inch line that was built with the plant when you originally did the plant work. So, the utilities works extensive, it's going to be even more extensive as we move forward. For Phase One, this is the allotments we've made, we're also providing for a reclaim water booster station that will allow you to have storage tanks and booster pumps, and we're going to agree that we will not use more reuse than what we produce. So, whatever amount that we produce out of our development is what will be limited using in reuse water. That way, we're not going to run into the situations where you don't have enough reuse water to provide to your residents. Transportation impact fees. So, we recommended, and I don't think it got in the agreement, there is an ordinance in Osceola County, twenty-seventeen, or twenty-fifteen dash twenty-two, I believe is the name of the ordinance, it's the impact fee credit ordinance, and it defines how you define your credits and what is creditable. Instead of doing that, I think Mr. Manzares said that we have to do a tri-party agreement, so we'll be doing a tri-party agreement following this agreement to come back to you, per agreement between the developer, the city, and the county. There's, and the reason for that is because there's a lot of other issues than just the impact fees. We have roadways that are framework roads for the county that we have to build, whether that product's in the city or the county, we have to build those roadways. We have right-ofways that are forty feet wide on Casimy Park Road and on Clay Whaley Road, so we need to purchase additional right-ofway. So, between now and that tri-party agreement, we're going to go to the county and we're going to request they authorize the CDD powers of condemnation on behalf of the county, and then allow the CDD to acquire those properties, and because that's right-ofway to the county and above what we need for our actual project, we'll do credits through that process. But that at least gives us the opportunity to get the right-ofway, and we're not going to burden the city or the county with additional costs to acquire that right-ofway. So, there will be a tri-party agreement, and Dan probably can speak to that better.
Can you say those roads again? You said it was Clay Whaley?
Well, there's multiple roads, but the ones that I'm designing right now, Casimy Park Road and Clay Whaley Road, Clay Whaley is a forty-foot right-ofway for the majority of it. There's some properties that dedicated ten feet, so there's some sections that are fifty. To do the two-lane divided, or the two-lane divided roadway that the county's requested, we need a seventy-eight-foot right-ofway, so we need to purchase thirty-eight. Along Stagecoach Drive and those, we only need twenty-eight, because they've already dedicated ten. So, we've aligned the roadway to where, once we're on our property, we'll dedicate the right-ofway. So, we're on the south side of Clay Whaley, we're going to transition to the north side, so there's a development that's already been submitted to the county for Mr. Martinez, and he's providing the additional right-ofway on his property, and then it'll go back onto Edgewater property, so we don't have to buy. So, if we did it from the north side, we have, we had three homes impacted and we had twelve properties. If we buy from the south side in transition, I have six properties and no homes impacted. So, we've tried to be good stewards and make sure that we purchased that right-ofway correctly. On Casimy Park Road, that will be a ninety-two-foot right-ofway. So, the right-ofway and the roadway is set up for the ultimate section of a four-lane divided roadway with a median. The other roadways that are within our project that are framework roads, those right-ofways are funded by us, so there's probably seven or eight more framework roads that we'll be building throughout the development, and the applicant will be funding those as part of his construction.
So, then just the eminent domain portions are the creditable portions, or is it?
No. How, and again, that's going to be negotiated as part of that tri-party agreement, under the county's ordinance, anything that's above and beyond what your needs of the project is. So, what they would typically do is ED2 would need a two-lane road to service it, so a fifty-foot right-ofway, and we're fine designing it as a fifty-foot right-ofway. As a framework road, they want the ability to increase that right-ofway to seventy-eight feet, so the differential in right-ofway is typically part of that credibility. The improvements, they'll require buffered bike lanes. The county pays for those buffered bike lanes. We build them with our project, but they pay for the costs associated with the seven additional feet of pavement on each side. There's some projects that we plan for on-street parking that won't be credible, that'll be borne by the adjacent properties as they build that parking. We're not going to build that on-street parking on our site except for potentially, definitely one on the Edgewater property, possibly the Martinez property, just so it's built at one, but the individual developers will work out that cost share separate of the government.
And when you spoke through the utility upsizing part, and then the adjacent properties that this will be serving, to me, that feels like a pioneering agreement for those properties coming on down the line, right? So, you're helping fund something that they ultimately need for the upsize, right? So, it's, we call it an upsize, but it's really to serve those properties, and if it's those holistically, then they should almost bear that expense?
Well, about twenty years ago, I'm going to say it's that long ago, the city of St. Cloud, NTWA, did pioneer agreements. The problem is, is people change over and they're keeping up with the information of it, they end up funding on the pioneer, they fund the improvements, and then they don't get repaid on the backend, so it just goes. So, there used to be in the TWA ordinance, if you were, if you were part of that pioneering, then you had to pay eleven dollars a foot to connect onto the utilities for whatever frontage you had to those utilities. That's no longer part of that process. So, what we do now is we plan, based on your master plan and our negotiated sizings, we plan to build what's going to service the area, and then difference between what our cost would be and yours, and the benefit of that is, is if we only put the eight-inch water main in, it wouldn't serve everybody, so you would have to come back, take the eight-inch out and put in a twelve. And so, it just puts that in upfront, so you don't have to take care of that.
Or the next developer down the line doesn't have to put in a parallel line to...
Yeah, how you guys deal with the other developers is separate of us.
Yeah, because to me, it's, if the impact fee is organized properly to have those mains in there and those specific projects at those costs, then yeah, it's a one-for-one, but right now, our fee doesn't even cover the capacity charge for the plant we're having to build to produce the water for the connection, so it just throws it off for me.
And maybe that's the way, if you relook at your impact fees, maybe as part of your impact fee ordinance, there are municipalities in the state of Florida that have an impact fee if you're in the city, and an impact fee if you're on an expanded situation. So, impact fees are supposed to pay for the additional capacity needed to service the area. That's what, that's how they're supposed to size those dollars. So, what those municipalities do is they actually charge an additional impact fee based on what they credited off. So, if they credited, and this main was upsized to serve your property, your hydraulic share of that credit, you have to pay that additional impact fee back to the city, so, and the same piece like that, as well as, I believe Sarasota does as well.
Then, I have a couple questions from Marjorie, but one more for you. So, this utility upsize portion of this, is that just for Phase One, and there will be additional ones coming down the line?
Yes, sir. So, this is the Phase One construction that we're doing right now. I don't know the total cost of our construction, I want to say it's twenty, twenty-some million, what we're building right now?
On the utility side?
On the utility side is probably, I think the utility side is about six-point-three million, and the overall is about twenty-three million.
Yeah, because one of the things you mentioned, the additional connection for the city to have another pipe out from the water plant, that's something that, to me, is critical of, something that kind of should have been mentioned of in the staff report, that's a big deal, right? That is a great benefit, and that's needed. So, I guess, next question's from Marjorie. We're getting capacity five MGD out of this plant, this project will take up thirty-five percent. Are we sure, I mean, it's, that's what we're planning for, is this kind of growth? Are we sure, timing-wise, of that capacity coming online with this project? We did see a phasing plan, but there was no dates really tied to it or any, are we sure we're going to have enough water in the hose?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So, we will be, we've asked them or talked to them about the same thing that we've done with Center Lake, which is having a phasing plan and then the timing, just generally knowing that this is going to change, but we believe, and making sure that we do have water in the hose, water in the pipe. We do believe that we're well within the timeframes, but we have to expedite depending on what that matrix shows. We've got one existing for Center Lake also.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, my, I guess, comment for the rest of the council is just on the whole annexation thing of the dollars in and out, we just have to talk about it. I mean, it's just the whole, it's a part of the JPA, so kind of buy that, that legal binding document, once it's adjacent, we annex and we have the whole thing with the county, so that's one of the things I know Mr. Surgeon and I talked about, he'll bring it up for our city-county discussion, but that's one of those things, big-ticket items I want to talk about.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, with regard to the annexation and the mobility fees, you know, this agreement is setting us up that we can annex, but I am of the same mindset, I don't know that I want to annex it, and, you know, and I had talked to Mr. Manzares about it, because I said, when you read this agreement, this agreement is written in a way that we're annexing this. It says that the mobility fees are coming from the city, you know, and I was like, well, what if we don't annex it, you know? And what was your legal term? The Wild, Wild West, what was it?
Well, you're not annexing it tonight.
We're not annexing it tonight.
But the mobility fee credits are only coming from the city if the project is annexed. Otherwise, there's no obligation to pay mobility fees to the city because the property's not in the city boundaries.
What did you call it, though? You had a fun term.
I don't remember.
Water in the hose?
Did you talk to me before, two hours ago? Because I don't remember anything.
Anyways, because I said, what happens?
Typical attorney.
If we have this agreement, yeah, do you have it in writing? I don't have it in writing. But according to this agreement, the way, I agree with you, like, when I read it, it was like, and then there was going to be this tri-party agreement on mobility fees, and it's going to be this, and I was like, I don't know that I want to annex this, I don't, you know? And I agree with Mr. Trace on, you know, all the things you said about the water, the, you know, mobility fees, the utilities. I asked the same question, I was like, because there was, it was kind of sparse information in the package regarding the utilities, and I agree, I didn't know that there was this alternative connection until it was just brought up right now, like, I guess, you know, I had the same concerns, but the biggest one for me is like annexing, I mean, I don't know that I want to annex this property into the city myself, so, but I confirmed with the attorney before the meeting, if he remembers.
I do remember.
I said, we are not, this is not obligating us to annex, correct? And he said, no, so.
Well, and remember, this project has, and it, this agreement has essentially a, almost a nine-month period involved where a lot of the issues that you're talking about and addressing could be, could be fleshed out a little better before it comes back for possible annexation. That would be part of the plan.
Thank you. I also met with the applicant and reviewed all of the stuff that we've already talked about, and I appreciate all the way that they've certainly worked with our staff, and I appreciate all the hard work our staff has done, and this has been a very... I know this has been a very...a lot of work and a lot of time, and thank you for all that you've done. Is the applicant wanting to speak further to this?
Hello. Kevin Kramer with BTI Partners. I think Sean covered all of the technical aspects pretty well. Commissioner Trace, just speaking to the value of the homes and what value it would take in order to, I believe it was, police and fire. We anticipate, even in this first phase, the average home price to be, you know, to be around $350,000. We think there'll be townhomes that will start in the mid-200s, and then our 50-foot lots will...they'll go up into the 400s for these homes. So, I think we're well above that $250,000 mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other further discussion? Councilmember Trace?
One question. So, in this agreement, it discusses the property versus the entire property. I guess this is a question for Marjorie. Let's say something bad happens at the new facility, the new water facility that's getting built, that services kind of the...what is that, stopper group or whatever? And it doesn't happen, or it delays for five years. What happens when we approve 6,124 dwelling units of water, and then that's just not there anymore? If the...I always want to call it the Cypress Lake facility...
Cypress Lake facility.
If there's a five-year delay because permitting, all the construction, all that kind of stuff, right? And this is taking 35 percent of that capacity. If that doesn't happen, that's a big problem.
We can't let that happen. So, we'd have to escalate the development of Cypress Lake and work with our regional partners. So, as you know, we already have water-wheeling agreements and sharing agreements. So, you know, if we would need the water sooner, we would have to escalate and move forward with the project.
Okay.
But I'd like to see the numbers that you kind of did on the back of your envelope later offline, because, if it's okay...
Yeah.
Because it's not going to be potable irrigation, so I just want to make sure that...
I just do the 300 gallons per year you...
Oh, okay. And we actually...we'll show you what we've come up with for the...
You done?
I'm sorry.
For planning purposes, it's probably that high, but for real numbers, it's less.
And you did agree, you said, to the streets, the sidewalks, maintenance, and the trees and the sidewalks, right? All that's included?
Yes, sir.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution 2021-183R?
I'll make a motion for that adoption.
I'll make a second.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
To put those conditions in your motion, Ms. Raskey?
Are we talking about the sidewalks, trees?
That they'll maintain the sidewalks, the trees, and then they'll get an appraisal of the land value, and we'll pay the lesser...
For the fire station.
For the fire station.
Yes.
Got that?
So, those three items have been added and agreed to.
Good.
Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Question carries three to one.
Madam Clerk, could you please read item number four?
Resolution number 2021-185R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the mayor to enter into an inter-local agreement between Osceola County, Florida, a political subdivision of the state of Florida here in After County, and the City of St. Cloud, Florida, a Florida municipal corporation here in After City, relating to cooperation on essential activities related to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership, HOME, programs and providing for an effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a request to enter into an inter-local agreement with Osceola County to be eligible for home funds. The city population alone is not large enough to receive home funds directly, so in order for the county to qualify as an urban county, they add the county's population with the city's population. Previously, they've been adding the City of Kissimmee's population to their population to qualify as an urban county, but this is an agreement to have the City of St. Cloud also join that qualification. Subsequent to this agreement that will help the county qualify as an urban county, we will have to enter into a consortium with the county to receive funds from the county that are provided directly to the county from HUD. This inter-local agreement is for a three-year period, and once the county receives funds, then the city will receive its proportionate share. This request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals for economic development and growth management. Staff has reviewed this request and recommends approval of Resolution Number 2020-185R. Likewise, it is requested that City Council approve this resolution for an inter-local agreement with Osceola County for the home consortium. At this time, staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion in our motion by council.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Question carries four zero.
And it carries. Mr. Manzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry it's late, but I'm trying to compile the list for the discussion points for the joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. If I could share with you, I have five items: density, executive lots, part of that density discussion, development standards, fill/dirt standards, if they say that right, Councilmember Matheny. And then we want to talk about the JPA from an annexation perspective. Mr. Trace, if you could help me clarify that a little bit more. I wrote that down in our notes today.
Well, it's just the fiscal impact of us annexing is different than in Orange County, where there's some instances where a piece of property gets annexed from the county to the city, and they pay less in property taxes, in ad valour taxes and all that combined because of just the way their millage structure is set up. So, just a conversation. So, you know, we, as we're talking about the whole JPA area, they know what we're planning on doing on annexation or not, and kind of where that line goes. So, fire stations and police and everything can be planned out appropriately. So, if we decide, you know, we're cutting off the line at some point, they know, and kind of the reasons why. And if there's something that needs to change about the way things are funded, to change, you know, change the equation, then that's something I'd like to talk through. And on the development standards, something else, too, that other, you know, we're going to deal with once things get closer to the manor in some other areas. If there's density, you know, in the middle of a project and then on the outskirts, it's bigger lots, or there's some sort of transition, kind of some of the smart growth principles have that transition as you work through the project. So, it's not just that five-foot drop. It's the...it might be wider lots on the outside, and it's narrower on the inside, and vice versa, so... And I think, do you have your light on?
Councilmember Matheny?
So, when you say development standards, I mean, are we going with some development standards written that we're going to ask them for? Because I know it seems like historically, we say, we want better development standards, and then the county will say, okay, what do you want? And then we're like, uh, better. Like, I feel like we need to kind of have, like, a list of things, and I think the JPA conversation is great to have. I know we've been talking about that since I've been on council, like, where does the city end? You know? And just because someone drew it on a piece of paper 20 years ago doesn't mean that's the limits. But again, I think we need to understand, we need to come and say, here's the limits of our city. You know, like, if we say, hey, we might be changing them, I think a more fruitful conversation is, here's where they're going? I don't know. I mean, what's the intent when you say development standards?
I was just echoing what Councilmember Raskey to talk about. I would imagine to make sure they coincide. So, like I said, we always get this, I want to call it bait and switch. It's like, they'd have one way, we have another. We can't agree, and we're sitting there at the table arguing with them about it.
I thought we fixed that.
So, Melissa, do you have any...is that still an issue? I think we've done better. I think it can get better. I think that it might be more operational than to bring the elected bodies into that, but Melissa.
Yeah, I do feel that our relationship has certainly improved over time. You know, we've had a lot of conversations with Dave Tomek and Susan Caswell, and I believe, my personal opinion is that our relationship has improved, and they most recently have provided us access to their system, or they're working on providing us access to their system so that we can review their development projects and permits directly and not have to wait for them to email them to us. They'll give us licenses so that we can go directly into their system and add comments.
Mr. Manzares?
Just if I may, on this issue, I think what, if I may speak for staff a little bit, I think part of the issue is that the ideal situation in any JPA where any municipality agrees with the county to draw an area around the existing boundaries and say, we're going to expand in this area, the idea is that that expansion area, that the city and the county ideally can come to some agreement as to establish development standards in that area, so that everybody's on the same page. And I'm not sure Melissa will say this, but I think I've been around this situation a long time to know that the county has always been saying, yeah, we're okay with working on uniform standards. We just want them to be our standards.
Well, I think if we can have a list of issues...
And I think that's part of what, I think what's where you really want to try to get to. And I'm not going to ask Melissa to agree to that statement I just made. That's purely mine and my thought.
So, let me suggest this. We'll...I'll work on this list. We have a workshop in two weeks. I'll have the list of the development standards we want to discuss, recommended by staff, and then we can vet it out a little bit then.
Yeah, I think if we had specificity, like, we want four and a half parking spaces, and you guys, they're not doing that, and we want this, and you're not doing that.
That's in my mind.
Whatever, like, the specificity, not just a blanket statement.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Trace, go ahead.
What was that document? I can't remember the name of it, that showed kind of that overall picture of the city outside of the city limits? It was a pretty document that they put together, that there was like one map out of it that showed kind of density pockets and...
Did the county put that?
Is there any county's presentation?
It was in, it was the city put it together. It's like a how shall we grow thing.
Is it the Invision St. Cloud plan?
Invision St. Cloud.
Yes, thank you.
So, incorporating some of those elements into those standards, because a lot of that is outside the city, but it might be in the city at some point.
And additionally, we talked about the JPA, how do we grow? How do we responsible growth? So, I talked to several of you about the interactive growth model, and like I said, I'll just take the hit that, you know, we did do a good staff presentation on that, but I actually saw the presentation today, and it'll be coming back to you on the 19th for your workshop in August, to show you that modeling process, which they do. We don't have to do it. I think that's another tool, so we can start looking at that stuff pretty hard, and it does wastewater, water, police, fire, and I think it's going to be another tool we can put in our toolbox versus just a single person doing an analysis, and I think it'll really help. So, let me, again, finalize this list, bring it back in the workshop for the 26, and then we'll be able to refine that.
What was the one, Matheny, about fill? You said, what's the fill?
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
So, I deal with this all the time on my job, where the developments come in, and then they're like the last ones in, right? There's houses or developments all around, and it's the last piece in. And then they fill their site five, six, eight feet, and then it causes all these problems to everyone around it. And so, I mean, one of the things is, is like, don't let them fill all the way up to the property line. So, you know, Mr. Hindle was saying, oh, we'll do a four-to-one slope. It's like, yeah, but that's still just straight down to the property line, you know? I think we should say...they're trying to just make their pond as small as they can. That's what's happening. And then they have to fill the site because they can't get it to work because of the groundwater table, and they're making the pond small. So, if they want to make their pond small, I think we need to say, well, for every foot you go up, you got to go 10 feet off of the property line before you can start your fill. And then that creates actually a perimeter that you can address, like all of the surrounding grade, or something like that. You can have, you can put two feet of fill, but beyond two feet of fill, you have to offset. And I'll take a bunch of pictures, actually, and send them to you.
Perfect.
So, you can see, like, what happens, because you'll go stand in these yards, and you're just like gobsmacked at, you know? On a piece of paper, it doesn't look that bad, but then when you see it, you know, it's really bad.
Gramercy Farms, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah. It happens all the time, and then all the surrounding areas just always have trouble, like, they start flooding when they didn't have flooding before, and things like that, so...I'll get some pictures and share them.
Thank you. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilmember Trace?
I've talked out.
Thank you. Okay.
What? Councilmember Askew?
I don't have anything, but I'm going to write down the date that Ms. Matheny didn't have anything.
Don't jinx it, though.
I got to go back.
All right. I have a couple of things. I received a call from Congressman Darren Soto saying that our $2.5 million grant request for the water, wastewater, plain water project has made it into the budget at the House, and he thinks that we'll continue to go through it. The problem we'll have now is when it lands in the Senate. So, I just want to thank Mr. Darren Soto and Congressman Soto for all of his hard work and for going to bat for our city on our request. I'd also like to thank our Grants Department that worked with the Recreation Department in putting together a grant request for a special program that would meet the needs, provide a recreation program for special-needs kids here in our city, and we received, we were awarded that grant from the Florida League of Mayors. And I just want to thank the grant writers and the Recreation Department for all the hard work and all the staff that put into that, and I look forward to seeing that money being a blessing to a lot of special-needs kids in our community. With that, I don't have anything else. It brings us to our information and reports section. Monday, July the 19th, we'll be qualifying for the special election, which begins at 12:00 p.m. noon, and ends Friday, July the 23rd, at 12:00 p.m. noon. Monday, July the 26th, there will be a City Council Budget Meeting at 3:00 p.m. here at City Hall Council Chambers. Tuesday, July the 27th, there will be a City Council Budget Meeting, if necessary, at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall Council Chambers. Monday, August the 2nd, there will be an intergovernmental meeting with Osceola County Commission at 3:00 p.m. at Osceola Heritage Park. Thursday, August the 5th, there'll be a CRA meeting at 6:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. At 6:00 p.m. Thursday, August the 12th, there will be a City Council Meeting at 6:30 p.m. at City Hall. July and August is heating up. We have no proclamations at this time. I'd like to make you aware that Warrant List Number 15 is available for your review. With that, there is no other additional items on our agenda. We will be adjourned.
I was listening to all those dates, and I realized...